Before I begin the meeting, I just want to say that the agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made, and again, after the meeting, on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the February 16, 2023, public hearing on the real property tax law, 466A. I call this meeting to order at this time and ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Gomez, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Salute the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Creedon, do you have something on the...
Roll call? Sorry.
Mrs. Blumenau, Mr. Cosenzo, Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mr. Perrino?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams, Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Here.
Yes, Mr. Tuttle, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and Mrs. Creedon, our Superintendent.
Tonight we are here to do the public hearing for the real property tax law, 466A, as enacted by Chapter 670 of the laws of 2022. And the real property tax law that we're referencing is talking about the tax reduction on property taxes for volunteer firefighters and ambulance emergency medical personnel. So, the Board tonight is proposing this resolution to put in place the tax reduction because they recognize that attracting and retaining quality volunteer firefighters, emergency personnel, ambulance workers, is one of the most critical problems facing our communities today, that maintaining these positions and these abilities for these agencies to respond in a time of emergency or crisis are very critical to our success. And this property reduction, tax reduction, is a way to help to recruit, retain, membership in those organizations. So, overview of the tax law that we are going to be discussing in more detail this evening. Tax law 466A was put in place in December of 2022, and what it does is allow local governments and municipalities to reduce tax base for individuals who are a part of their volunteer organizations, fire companies, fire departments, and ambulance and emergency services as applicable.
So, part of the law allows us to go up to 10% of a property tax exemption for each volunteer firefighter and/or ambulance and worker. That is a 10% off your assessed value, so it would not be necessarily off your tax bill, the amount you pay. A couple qualifiers: it must be for your valid residential property only, and you must actually have residence there. So, and they also have some exemption, some proration for if you lease out part of your building, things like that. So, there's going to be a whole bunch of questionnaires you're going to have to answer at the assessor's office. So, a couple more qualifiers to be exempt: you must reside in the Middletown City School District, be an active member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, or fire department or incorporated volunteer ambulance service, which provides service within the district. So, that's important. Utilize the residence as their primary residence, which I just spoke about. They must obtain and display a certified issue of authority having jurisdiction for an incorporated volunteer fire company, a fire department, indicating that the applicant has an enrolled member of such incorporated volunteer company for at least two years. So, what the law has changed, it used to be five years, now it's down to two years, and it must be certified each year, right? So, that's going to be something you're going to have to do annually.
Yeah, there's an annual questionnaire attestation that homeowners will be required to complete in order to apply for the tax exemption.
Yep. Okay, and then additional credit is for someone who has served for 20-plus years as a member of fire or ambulance service, you are guaranteed, you're granted exemption for life, as long as you maintain that residency in that home and live within the Middletown School District. Unremarried surviving spouses of volunteers killed in the line of duty are still eligible for the exemption, as long as you maintain that residency in that house.
The same for 20-plus-year member, it's the same exact criteria. It's just that if the deceased member has to have that activated prior to their death in order for the exemption to continue on past their death.
In the same manner as our veterans exemptions, as alternate exemption, the, basically, the funds are redistributed, the tax is redistributed to all of the other taxpayers in the community. The veterans take, have a very similar exemption with a 10%, so it would act the same way, just redistributing the funds to other taxpayers. We also put in the slide for your convenience, all the city and town assessors, their contact information. This will be sent to them tomorrow, once it's signed, or if, once it's approved tonight, and then signed tomorrow. And then, the application process, you'll need to notify them and do your S- attestation with them regarding your service and stuff. We can open up to a public hearing if anyone has comments to the Board.
Mr. Gracia.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, members of the Administration. My name is Loung Gracia. I serve professionally as the Commissioner of Public Works and the co-directive Emergency Management for the Town of Walk Hill. In my volunteer life, I've been a 40-year member, a volunteer member to Howells Fire District, Howells Fire Company, past chief twice over, currently a fire commissioner for the past 20 years, also past president of the Orange County Fire Chiefs Association and the Orange County Fire Districts Association. I'm here tonight to voice my support of the exemption. I think it makes a, certainly will make a difference in our community. It will allow for our volunteers to recoup some savings, of course, and it may entice others to volunteer. It's a, it's been a long time coming to, to change the law. The law was changed in December, we're under a tight timeframe, as you are aware. I appreciate this Board's, you know, their ability to move forward on this. Also, tonight, the Menesink Valley School District is holding a similar public hearing. The Town of Walk Hill will be holding a public hearing next Thursday night, the 23rd. Our individual fire district, Outland Howells, will be holding a public hearing on February 27th. The applications are due, like you said, to the individual town and city assessors with its, you know, with a deadline of March 1st. I have applications here with me tonight. I'll leave those actually with Mr. Perrino. Mr. Perrino has actually spent a lifetime of service to the Excelsior Hook and Ladder Company in the City of Middletown. Thank you for your service. The Town of Walk Hill, there's seven volunteer fire companies that service the Middletown School District in some manner or capacity. Also, the City of Middletown Fire Department has seven individual fire companies with volunteers that serve the City of Middletown School District. So, once again, this is a, this is a very good thing for the community. I would also hope that it would entice folks to come out and join. I see a lot of young people in the room here. I know that every fire department within the Middletown City School District confines has what they call Active Under 18 Programs, where you can join the fire department at 16 years of age. That's when I did it, some 40 years ago, and it's an amazing experience. Any firehouse, where you live, every Monday night, there's somebody there, go knock on the door, tell them who you are, they're definitely looking for help, and they would love to have you. And it's a real good way to get involved in the community. You'll get to know people in the community. It builds a bond, it builds, you know, a fraternity that can't be broken. We have, you know, we always say firemen. In Howells, right now, we have just as many strong female firefighters, and it's, it's just amazing how that has moved on over the years. And at the end of the day, we just need more and more volunteers to provide the service. Statewide, the numbers are literally in the billions of dollars, if in fact, we had to pay for fire protection in New York State. So, we don't want to go down that path. So, I really appreciate your support. I also have here with me tonight is Stu Degroot, and he's going to come up and speak. Stu is a past captain in Middletown Fire Department, and I'm sure he's going to speak in the affirmative also. And if I could just approach, I'd like to give these to Mr. Perrino.
Thank you, Mr. Gracia. These are the applications that must be filled out, so anyone in the rooms who volunteer firemen, they're right here, and I'm going to have them put at the Board of Education office at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else that would like to add their comments?
I'll take one of those. Thank you.
Hi, Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Stuart Degroot. I have been a volunteer firefighter for 38 years in the same company as Mr. Perrino. I want to say thank you for at least bringing this to the agenda, and I would hope that you vote in the affirmative for this rear property tax for us volunteers. There are many people who, who think our taxes are way too high, and with this being, if it is approved, it's a great incentive to have more people come into the district, more taxes for the school and for the townships and wherever. As, I do want to reiterate what Loung Gracia said, it's a great opportunity, not just to be a volunteer, but to take and get to know your neighbors, and also, members of councils, school district Board members, and just move forward. So, I would like to say, if you could please vote in the affirmative of this tax, rear property tax, 466. Thank you very much. I yield back.
Since this is a very quick deadline, that it has to be in within a couple of weeks, I'm assuming that you are spreading this, or will be, just telling your volunteer fireman about this?
Yes, we are, Madam President. We are definitely spreading the word. Thank you. I yield my time.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Hearing none. Is there any discussion on the Board of Education? I will start with Mr. Mitch Williams, and I'll go back and forth. Any comment on this?
I'm going to be abstaining, as I am a volunteer firefighter.
I just want to say that I, I think this is long overdue, and I'm really going to be happy to cast my vote yes for this measure.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez?
I think this is a great idea. It shows how tax relief could be an incentive to encourage our citizens voluntarily to give back and invest in the community. And what better way of giving back and investing than investing in honoring all those wonderful men and women who serve as either fire, volunteer firefighters, or volunteer ambulance corp, and encouraging others to join and do the same. So, I'm definitely voting yes.
Mr. Pastor Williams?
Many, many of our volunteer firefighters, many of those that serve in this community are multi-generational, and, and they've served, not only have they served now, but their, their family members before them served. And so, for me, this is a no-brainer. It's been long overdue, and I think that it's, it's time. I'm glad that the state has finally decided that this is the direction that we're moving in. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward to casting a yes on this, so, thank you.
Mr. Cosenzo?
Excuse me. I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, and I'm retired, I'm on a New York State Teachers Retirement Pension, Social Security, and Medicare, and I don't think our taxes are too high. If you were here today to see an overview of our programs, you would be totally amazed about the bang for the dollar that we get educating our scholars. And, you know, I go to sleep at night, and I've been in Middletown for 25 years, and I know the police department is always there, the fire department, thank goodness, I'd never had to use them, but they're just amazing, amazing individuals to be dedicated and risking their lives to do something like this. So, I'm 110% behind this. It's a very good idea.
Thank you. All, yes, Mr. Perrino, I forgot you. Oh, my gosh.
No, I've been a volunteer, as Lou mentioned, for many, many years. After I got out of the service, 1967, I joined the Excelsior's Hook and Ladder Company. But, I, I think this exemption is a good way to recruit members. It's not easy to get members today. There's no money for volunteering. Much training is required, and believe me, you get up in the morning sometime, at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, when that alarm goes off, and sometimes it's the winter, snowing cold, and you, you get to fire. The ladders become iced up, the hoses get icy, the area gets slippery. It's not an easy job, and it can be a very, very dangerous job, but it's also a very rewarding job. So, I'm 150% for this. Mitch Williams and I, Mitch is also a volunteer with the Ontario, is a new, newer member. We've been advised to recuse ourselves from this by the Board's attorney, because we have a, an interest in this, but there appears to be enough votes to pass this, so, happy to see this come to fruition. As Lou said, and Stu said, it's long overdue. Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin.
I, I want, I want to state something for clarity's sake, for clarity's sake, for the public that's here, that this is just the public, the public hearing, but later on in the evening, during our regular meeting, we'll be voting on this resolution. If we're not voting on it right now, I don't want you to be discouraged. You've heard from all of us, and we're all, we're all are a preliminary, preliminary yes for it, so, thank you.
Good point, Pastor. Thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and now move into the public hearing on the district's storm water.
So moved.
Second.
I believe that was moved by Pastor, seconded by Mr. Gomez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I need to call to order the public hearing, district storm well, storm water management plan. I need a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Perrino. I need you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Perrino, will you do the pledge?
Yes, thank you.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Bartlett?
Madam President, I just want, I just want to, for, for sake of clarity, real quick, you asked for a motion, but it's not necessary for a motion. You, you as the, as the President, have the right to be able to call this meeting to order, so.
Thank you.
Did you want to do the roll call first?
We do roll call.
Oh, roll call. You think I'll ever learn?
Yes, you will.
Mrs. Blumenau, Mr. Cosenzo?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mr. Perrino?
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Here.
Pastor Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Tobiasin. This evening, we, this is our storm water presentation. Our district is required to, to maintain a storm water management plan, and as I mentioned, this is our annual hearing for the informational purposes. Storm water is all the water that runs off from our properties, from snow and rain events, from the roofs, parking lots, and sidewalks. Throughout the year, we have, we are required to maintain the water, excuse me, to monitor the water leaving the school district sites, to ensure that there are no pollutants, and to make sure the systems are operating as designed. The plan is available to the public during regular business hours in the Buildings and Grounds Office at 223 Wisner Avenue. It's also on the district's website under Facilities Management. There you will find a number of tips for the community on how to prevent pollution. It also explains the importance of not interfering with storm water structures and the flow of water off the sites. There's also information about how we handle storm water coming off from construction sites. We currently do not have any open permits for construction, but are anticipating one for the summer's capital projects. As I mentioned, the plan is available to the public. If anyone has any questions, they can contact the Buildings and Grounds Department at 223 Wisner Avenue. Our phone number is 326-1194. Does the Board have any questions?
Are there any questions, or do the public have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like a motion to adjourn the public hearing to go into our regular public meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Mr. Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving, pardon me?
Goodbye, Mr. Mitch Williams, I mean.
I'm sorry.
It was quiet this time.
I'd like now to welcome everyone to the February 16, 2023, regular meeting of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. I will need to ask you to stand again, as I call the meeting to order, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cosenzo, would you do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perrino, do you have a moment of silence?
Unfortunately, I do have a moment of silence this evening. The, if you please remain standing for a moment. This moment of silence is for Dominico Popo, the brother-in-law of LeAnn Popo, and LeAnn is a very respected member of our Monhegan staff. She's a keyboard specialist. Dominico's brother, Nick, operates a HVAC and a, is a plumbing contractor also, very reliable, a good reputation in town. If you would please, just bear with me a moment, I'm going to read a little bit about the write-up of Dominico. Dominico worked many jobs and worked very hard for his family. A devoted husband, father, and grandfather who valued family above all. His kind heart and hard-working habits inspired those around him. He loved the outdoors and spent most of his time working around his home, tending his garden, splitting wood for the coming winter, or tending to his chickens. He enjoyed hunting. Making his own wine, tomato sauce, another Italian tradition. He also liked playing a competitive game of bocce. And let me tell you, you could see how well-respected Mr. Popo was, not only at the visitation, but at the mass of Saint, in Saint Joseph's Church. A very respected member of the community. Please remember Mr. Popo in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino. Moving on, I think, Mr. Gomez, you have the mission statement?
Yes.
Would you read us the mission statement?
The mission statement of the enlarged city school district of Middletown reads as follows: "We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society."
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Ms. Mosherig, would you do the roll call, please?
Mrs. Blumenau, Mr. Cosenzo?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Perrino?
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Moving on, I need an approval...
Can you give me one second?
Hmm? Oh. Okay. So, we're going to amend the agenda to change the voting place in May from the high school to the Board office on Wisner Avenue over here.
We don't have to amend the agenda, it's, it's in the agenda now.
It is in the agenda now? Okay. Boy, I'm really going to get about a C on this meeting tonight.
We'll speak about that, we'll speak about that when we get to that item.
So, may I now have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Cosenzo. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to see item 3420 on the policies removed for further discussion, or we can discuss it here during the Board meeting. I would like to see an addition made to that policy.
What, where is that?
3420 is our, well, let me pull it up.
Now, where is it on your agenda?
It's under the policies, and it's our nondiscrimination and anti-harassment in the district. It, to me, is missing one item, an item letter L, and I would like to see that as vaccination and medical status added to that. Or we can postpone that for future discussion.
We'll just pull it. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, just for, for, just, just so we get clarity, clarity on, able to discuss it, discuss it later, pull it, that way the whole Board can review it, can review it and come back again. I think that we discussed that, that particular item in committee, as well as, it was sent out and presented to the rest of the Board, but just for clarity's sake, I think it's a good idea to pull it.
Yeah, I just wasn't invited to that particular meeting, so I'm excited to discuss that with the rest of you. Thank you.
With the, I now need a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I need an approval of the regular minutes from February 2nd, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor, seconded by Mr. Gomez, I believe, or Mr. Perrino?
Either one. I'll yield to Mr. Perrino.
Whichever.
Be honest.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine. I need an approval for letter B, the instructional approval of Personnel Memorandum 15B, 1 through 17. I need the motion.
So moved.
Second.
By Pastor, seconded by Mr. Perrino. Any discussion?
Yes, I will be voting no on item 15B8, the curriculum writer positions, due to my stance about the curriculum committee being necessary before we hire more of the curriculum writers, which I've done all along in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of 15B8 with the nine curriculum writers.
So noted. Motion passes with the exception to. I need an approval for the non-instructional Personnel Memorandum 15C, 1 through 9.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perrino, seconded by Mr. Williams, Mitch. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I need an approval on the Financial Memorandum. I need an approval on the financial memorandum 15D, 1 through 10.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion?
Yes. I will be voting no on the last item. I can give that number to Ms. Mancheri in a moment here. I just have to pull it back up because my computer went down. Apologies. It is item number...
10?
I think it's item 10, but I want to be certain because the computer...
Is that the cooperative?
It is. Yes, yes. That's item 10. Thank you. I'll be voting no on item 10. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of item 10.
So, you are concurring with, all right, so it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 2? Mr. Gomez and, that's 5, 2.
But they didn't vote no on the entire... Just on number 10.
On, just, yes, just on item 10. Sorry. You folks really keep me on my toes. Crystal, do I need to rephrase that? Do we need a motion then?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I need an approval of special service memorandum 15E, 1 and 2.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Crazzenzo, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have no change orders at this time. Now I need an approval of the exemption resolution.
So moved.
Second.
My dad was a firefighter. I had to...
Moved by Ms. Houston, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
5.
5, with two abstent, yes, with two abstentions. Mrs. Creedon, are you going to speak to that?
I can do, I can do that.
I can, yeah. We received a generous grant from Senator Skufus's office for some emergency safety enhancements to some doors. So, the grant amount totals $100,000, and we're very appreciative that his office is providing us with support on continuing our efforts for security.
I just have a question. Since this is a grant our elected officials are obtaining, is there a need to vote on it?
Yes.
We have to accept it.
I don't remember we ever voted like...
Yeah.
At a cer, at a certain amount of the grant.
Not anything over...
Certain amount, anything over a certain amount, we have to vote.
And it's a very low...
Then Assemblywoman Gunter has gone and it's granted for bottom.
We vote, we voted on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Great, yes.
So, I need a, a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. Item number 10, the Elk Student of the Month.
Hold on, we have to...
Mr. Perino, are you doing it?
President Tobiasin.
Wait. You gotta refresh your screen. Refresh your screen. Well, you're, you're not refreshing your screen. We'll just add it.
Motion to...
Oh, I didn't, you're right. Do you have it in front of you? All right.
Here. Here.
They discussed.
Well, that, yeah, resolution.
Okay. You still have to read that, yeah.
All right. Be it resolved, I'm reading the resolution of the Board of Education of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown to relocate election district number three, which was the Middletown High School, to the board office on Wisner Avenue. Be it resolved, in accordance with New York State Education Law, Section 2604, the Board of Education hereby relocate school election district number three, whereupon the designated polling place for the school election district number three shall be at the Middletown Board of Education for all future annual and district meetings and elections. Be it resolved that the boundaries for the school election number three shall remain the same and unchanged.
Yeah, got to use this. Oop, good. What'd you do?
I didn't do anything.
What did you do?
There you go. You got it.
Okay. There. Be it resolved that the current election district number one, be it further resolved that the boundaries for school election district number three shall remain the same and unchanged, be it further resolved that the current school election district number one, for which Presidential Park Elementary serves as the polling place, and the current school election district number two, for which Truman Moon Annex serves as the polling place, shall continue in existence without change to their respective boundaries respectably, such that henceforth the new election district and polling places shall be as follows. School election district number one, Presidential Park Elementary School. School election district number two, Truman Moon Annex. School election district number three, the Middletown Board of Education Building. Be it resolved that the district clerk is directed to provide a copy of the board's resolution to the Orange County Board of Election the next day following its adoption. So now I need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Mr. Crazzenzo. Any discussion?
Yeah. What was the reasoning behind this?
I think the confu, you know, buses leaving, busing's coming, the new board, the board office has additional room now, there's additional parking there without causing a disruption to school being in session here at the high school.
So, since the Board of Education is the decision-making entity for the district, the one who hires and fires and sets policy and approves budget, I just feel it's inappropriate for that selection. I have no problem making it another school, but I don't think it should be at the board office.
Thank you for your comment. Any...
I'm gonna vote nay, but for a different reason. When you have another high school, it gives an opportunity for our seniors who have already turned 18 and vote to cast their first vote at the school where they've learned their civics. And it seems to me that class of 2023 will not have that opportunity as all the previous classes did. So, standing up for my seniors, I'm gonna vote against it, for that reason, just for that reason.
I agree with you as well on that particular fact.
I think there's more parking up there. But that's, that's...
Mr. Perino?
I, I agree with the, the resolution.
Microphone, sorry.
Your microphone.
I'm sorry.
I agree with the resolution for a number of reasons. The high school tends to be, at times during the day, the parking lot tends, does tend to be crowded, number one. Number two, it does cause a, a degree of disruption at the high school. The high school and the board office are very, very close, so seniors can actually walk from the high school to the board office, should they so, should they so desire. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of information on various websites saying that this is moved, and the staff members at the high school will also make that point. So, I don't think it's going to be a hindrance to the seniors. My, myself, those students who want to vote will be able to vote to board office. Also, the board office used to be more crowded. Many of the personnel have been dispersed to other areas, so there is ample parking at the board office. So, that's my view on the situation.
I have something else. So, I did not vote to certify the last election. I voted no. There was a question about, if, if my memory is correct, 21 absentee ballots that were not properly accounted for. That is where those ballots are stored. We also uncovered some other information about who was the chief or head election inspector for our district, finding out it was actually one of the candidates. So, I am very not on board with this at all, especially since I'm running for office this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I was in favor of moving it because I felt the availability of our senior citizens and our residents to get into the building, which is, Amy, help me here, what's the title of where they...
Events lobby.
The events lobby. I just thought it would be more accountable for people coming to vote to use it there. And there is much more parking. If the buses are coming in and out, which they do, you, we have 11 o'clock whereabouts, our students go to BOSI's, and then we have buses loading, we have sporting events. That was my reasoning for changing it. So, I'll now, anyone else have a comment?
So, let me, let me point out, point out a couple of things. I, you know, upon hearing of this, I had some reservations, had some reservations about the moving of it, but my understanding is this. My understanding that this is more for a sense of convenience, again, to our, to our seniors, as well as, this year, we must, we've got to understand, we have a whole different traffic pattern at the high school than we've had in the past. Buses come in on the top loop, but the bottom loop is where, is where students that are being dropped off by their parents are. And so, if we're doing this in the events lobby, it's, there's a, there is another degree of congestion. And so, I think those are all the things that are being considered in it. I had my reservations at first upon hearing it, but as I've thought about it more, I think that the board office provides, provides easy in and out for people that want to vote, parking as that nature, without, without causing any kind of disruption to this very busy high school, very busy high school. So, I'll vote for, I'll vote for it for those reasons.
Thank you.
And, and I, and I'll say, I'll say this, I understand, I understand exactly what Mr. Gomez is saying, and I, and I agree, I understand that, but I don't think that it will change the experience for them in that, in that ma, in that manner. I think that we can still make this a great, a great experience for them in their voting.
I would have to say that...
Excuse me.
Go ahead. No. I was just continuing the discussion. I would have to say that I stand by what I said about the voting place. I agree with Mr. Gomez, but if you really feel that it is a distraction to the students and not helpful to our seniors, I propose Twin Towers Middle School then. I do not feel it should be at the Board of Education office. I feel very strongly about that.
Thank you very much. I have a motion here. I need a...
One. Any more comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gomez.
Yeah, with all, thank you. Yeah, I would just add that I think what, again, I'll, I'll stand by my vote, and I think we could still do a reasonable accommodation so that our seniors could have an area designated for them, maybe their parking area right next, near the cafeteria, more towards the right here in the, in high school parking, and so it'll be more comfortable for the seniors to make it accessible. So, I will vote as I indicated.
Thank you.
And of course, if, if the resolution passes, we'll, we'll support it, and we'll look next year how we could make it better for everybody.
Mrs. Tobiasin.
Yes, Mr....
Tobiasin. Twin Towers is probably the most inaccessible area for seniors. If a senior is fortunate enough, or for anyone, actually, if you try to park in front of the building, number one, most of this, it's very, very difficult, then you have to walk into the, walk quite a distance to get into the building, up certain steps. If you try to park in the back, you have to park in the lot across the street from the building. I, I remember way, way back, we did have voting at Twin, and for those reasons, it was changed because of the inaccessibility to that, relative inaccessibility to that, to the public for voting.
Yes, Mr. Crazzenzo.
Plus, the building's going to be under construction for the next five years. That's a big one.
Okay. Having heard the discussion...
I have one more thing, Mrs. President Tobiasin. Pick any other building location or a different area in our high school, and I'm on board with it, but I'm not on board with the Board of Education office.
We've heard you. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
It passes. Thank you very much for the discussion. Now I can move ahead to the Elk Student of the Month.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Tobiasin. Could we have the Student of the Month come up to the Elks with the House Principal? And I believe that's Mrs. Acevedo and the members of the Elks.
Thank you for your patience.
My name is Jim Anderson. I'm here with Jane...
Microphone, some green light.
Good evening. My name's Jim Anderson. I'm here with Jane Anderson and Errol Odom. We're from the Middletown Elks 1097 Lodge. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board, the family members, and the community for supporting our recent pancake breakfast on behalf of us and our exalted ruler, Jen Neuberger. Really appreciate the support, and the ROTC, they were fantastic helping us out. We had a very busy breakfast, and it was fantastic. So, thank you very much, everybody.
Could we call upon Mrs. Acevedo to introduce our Student of the Month and say a little bit about him?
Absolutely. It is my pleasure. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, families and everybody in our community. It is my pleasure to introduce our 10th grade student, Hassan Abra. He is one of the most responsible, hard-working, selfless, compassionate, giving, and diligent young men. I have the honor to work with him, and I have met him in this awesome school. He's a student with a great drive to success. He is mature, he's responsible, he's thoughtful, and his leadership approach is what we, as Middletown, myself as an alumni, we are proud of. He is generous, he, his work ethic is at the top of the list and mature. He is a two-sport athlete. He is a biomedical student. He is a track and lacrosse athlete, as well as a twin. So, it is my pleasure and honor to introduce this month's Student of the Month.
I would like to dedicate this award to my family, to my sister, Nora. To my brother, to my coaches, Coach Junior, Coach Senior, Coach Hammer. I would also like to dedicate this award to Mrs. Acevedo, Mrs. St. Louis, and dedicate this award to my lacrosse team, Coach Irazari, and many more. That's it.
Can we get a photo?
Yes.
Where would you like us?
We're from the family also.
Over there? Okay. Let's have members of the family, would you like to get in?
Yes.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Yes. Ready? Go right up to your dedication.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would also like to introduce Mr. Sedemarc, the Dean of the Class of 2025. Moving right along, we have the All County Music Recognitions at the High School.
I have the honor of being the K-12 Music Department Chair, and we are here tonight to recognize an astounding 51 high schoolers, it's not 51 high schoolers, but 51 selections for advanced high school ensembles across the state and across the East Coast, really. We, we're here to recognize all Eastern too. I have Mr. Bennett here with me. He's going to help me recognize our musicians. I'm going to start with orchestra and although everybody could not be here tonight, I'd like to still recognize everybody very formally because they had to work very hard to be accepted into the All County Ensembles. You have to prepare an audition and you perform it at a selected night. There's one night for vocalists and one night for instrumentalists and that, those auditions exist across the county and then, oh, thank you. And then you are selected based on your score. So I'd like to begin by recognizing Rihanna Cordero, who could not be here, Anaya Gonzalez, Fernando, Fernanda Canuto Avila, and Valerie Del Va, Del Vaie. And I'm going to turn the mic over, oh, here you are. There you are. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Bennett to speak about his chorus students.
Thank you. Milk did a body good. Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening and helping to acknowledge the music that flows through us, an endless song. And here's this list, it's before us, they're here, they've been working very hard and they were up early this morning so we could entertain this morning and they're just doing it all the time and having a great time and clearly it shows. So this evening we'd like to acknowledge Shannon Kelly. Kara Stroud is unable to be here this evening, but we'll take care of her. As well as Devon Coleman. Arthur Doyle is unable to be here this evening, but we want to give him his. I got it. Stefan Yupa.
And our band students could not be here tonight, but I still want to formally recognize them. We have Vincenzia Elia, Mariah Rogers. Oh, she's here? When did you sneak in? I'm so excited. Okay, Mariah Rogers. Jasmine Merritt. And Sophia Apprecio, and I hope I said it right. So that is 28 total musicians accepted into All County, representing us here in Orange County. So we're really proud of them. I'm going to move on to Area All State. We had 16 total musicians accepted into Area All State. In order to be accepted into Area All State, these acceptances and applications are based on the NISMA Solo Festival, which this year is super, and as well as All State and when I get to All Eastern. And this year, I think it was particularly important to note, this was our first festival, their first return to in-person auditions since COVID hit and everything went virtual. So it was the first time getting up in front of somebody and performing in front of a professional musician. And in order to audition for All State, you have to perform with a live accompanist, which for many of our musicians, this was their first chance to do that, and that puts in a whole other factor. So I will begin with Area All State, which that is this region of the state. So do you want to talk about vocals?
Sure.
Yeah, they're yours.
I think they'll, they'll go there. I'm just going to stick with that. Area All State this year for Middletown High School, we had 10 vocalists that were selected. I have to say that Area All State comprises what is our Zone Nine. There's five counties that are included, which would be Orange, there is Rockland, Sullivan, Green, and Ulster that are included in there. So for us to have 10 just in the chorus alone, I, I rarely have had any above and going into double digits. So we're very pleased and proud of that for this year. So the students that were selected are Deonte James. Valerie Del Val.
And we had six selected for the Area All State Orchestra. Rihanna Cordero. John Fettalicchio. And we're going to move on to All State next, and I'll let Mr. Bennett return to the mic.
The last, well, actually almost last for our duty. Deonte James, I'm just going to say the name because he was selected this year to represent Middletown High School along with three of his fellow classmates who were on the alternate list, which I feel badly about because in a standard All State year, there's two ensembles that would be in play, but because of everything that's been going on with COVID and playing safe, they shortened it, they brought the list down and they went with one ensemble this year. But these other three students worked just as equally hard and I was hopeful for them as we went through the process, but it got to the point where Deonte and I were traveling up to Rochester. He got to spend a weekend in the company of Derek Fox, which is one of my esteemed colleagues that teaches out in the Midwest. He's a fellow composer, arranger, and just did an amazing job for the weekend connecting with all the students and making music at the Eastman School. We went into the theater there and it's just an unbelievable place. If you've never been to Rochester, I would highly recommend while you're there visiting to go check it out. But Deonte is our sole representative for this year and so I'd like to call him up. Deonte James.
Do your other first.
Okay. And our alternates, which obviously they scored 100ths and a 99 in their respective categories, would be Stefan Yupa. Valerie Del Val.
Okay, so, and I will recognize, we had Anaya Gonzalez selected for All County, not All County, for All State Orchestra for the second year in a row, which is quite an honor, again with the reduced numbers. And so I had the privilege of seeing that concert and it was, it just blew me away to see the level that these high schoolers are able to perform at, hold them up against any college orchestra, any college music program that I've ever seen. And if you close your eyes, you can't tell, you can't tell they're any different. So congratulations to Anaya Gonzalez. And we have our final two recognitions, which is for All Eastern, and Mr. Bennett is going to correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time we had musicians selected for All Eastern was 2001.
Wrong.
See? There we go. When was the last time?
1993.
1993.
Oh, my God. Wow.
Would you like me to chime in?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Yeah, we're going to let him go.
1993 was the year that I was here as student teaching and I had to think back, two of my fellow colleagues who are now retired, Fortune Esposito and Sheila Esposito had their daughter come up through our program and Kelly Esposito Brolman, who now has Kelly's Music Corner here in Middletown and is doing her musical life and working with the kinderkids and their music programs and everything. She was Middletown's first selected student to go to All Eastern. So we give her credit because obviously she's carried the banner first. And then this past Sunday, I got to visit with our 2001 selectee, which was Aaron Tivate. And he and I traveled out to Pittsburgh for him to have that experience. And so the young lady who I'm going to say and talk about this evening is in rare company because for our school district, for any school district to be having a student selected to go participate in All Eastern, which, which is representative of 12 states, mostly the northern tier of the Eastern Seaboard. Fortunately for us, it's in our home state this year, so Valerie and I will be traveling up to Rochester at the end of April. Promises to be another amazing experience because actually NAFME, which is the parent organization for our NISMA organization, has gone back to, we're out of COVID now, so there'll be two ensembles, which will be part of the women's chorus that will be performing once again up at the Eastman School of Music. So I am very proud, actually, lists can go on, every single one of them that are here, they represent us to the best of their ability, they work hard. As I said, I'm living my life, an endless song that flows through, they keep me busy all the time. I can't believe that we're going into March next week because music has just been flowing. We were at rehearsals yesterday, rehearsals today. It's just ongoing, but they're always busy and they're always everywhere that we need them to be to bring the music. They're inspiring the elementary students, the middle school students. We're going to join together in a couple of weeks to do a district-wide performance. So I know you're all very proud of them and I know I'm taking time, but I'll let that go.
And while you heard our history of All Eastern, we have never had two students selected. And while Anaya was selected as an alternate, when you are selected as an alternate, it means that you meet all the credentials, but we just can't fit everybody on stage. So the line has to be drawn somewhere. So unfortunately, she will not be performing with the All Eastern Orchestra, but you can hear Anaya on Saturday, so here's a little shameless plug. Anaya is our first Middletown student to receive the SUNY Orange, to be the winner of the SUNY Orange Concerto Competition. So if you need something to do, you can head on out to the Paramount Saturday night at 7:30. Is my time right? Is it 7:30?
7:30.
Yeah, at 7:30. And Anaya will be performing the Mendelssohn Violin Concerto along with the SUNY Orange Orchestra. And I've heard her play it, it's quite amazing. And actually, I'm going to wrap this up because Valerie, Anaya, and I have to get over to that dress rehearsal. Valerie will be playing violin in that, in that ensemble as well. So I would like to formally recognize Anaya Gonzalez for her acceptance as an alternate to the All Eastern Symphonic Orchestra. Yeah, we're doing a picture, right? Caroline bossed me around. So thank you, yeah, she's right over there. Thank you so much. We are obviously extremely proud of everybody. They've worked so hard and you can come see them in the all district rehearsal, concerts too, next, in the 28th, the first and the sixth.
Thank you very much and thank you to the students for coming this evening.
Thank you. We're taking a picture.
I'm going to move on to item 11, which is the public participation. The public participation is limited to four minutes per speaker. An individual is not permitted to give their time to another individual. Do I have anyone that would like to address the board?
I'm on the list, man. No question. Public forum, am I correct?
Please sign in with your name and address.
I did.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Creedon, known you for a long time. I want to address something, I mean, it's a little bit on the negative side and it was about a letter that was released by the Superintendent's Office concerning a staff member and a TikTok video. Okay? So my personal opinion of the situation and had known the faculty member for a long time and paid attention to her interaction with her students. She has established a rapport with her students unlike any other that I've seen. She connects with her students on a different level and I would like to believe that every faculty member in the district would like to get to that point with. faculty member in the district would like to get to that point with their students. And I know that there are a lot of people here in support of this, okay? So this is my first board meeting, and I wouldn't normally attend, but I feel very strongly about this. If everyone is aware of what I'm speaking about, I mean, I can touch on it if you'd like, or there was a TikTok video, and two staff members were dancing to it, and a particular N-word was used in a song not sang by them. And I understand your position and the position of the investigation, but in my opinion, through observation throughout the years, I'm not supporting it, but as far as her position is concerned, as after the investigation and cause for removal, I would greatly disagree with that because I believe that the people that are being diserved by it are her students that she's touching. There's a lot of them here. If you guys can raise your hands, you can show how many people that have showed up to the board, to the board meeting in support of that, and me also as a parent. And I just would like to read one sentence in the letter that you released. If I can get my glasses out, please excuse me, I know I'm approaching my four minutes, but I'll be quick. "We are a school community that promotes tolerance, compassion, generosity, and love." Okay? I paid very close attention to that sentence because it's a responsibility of the school board, the faculty, to the parents and the community, but it's also a responsibility from the families, the parents, back to the district and the faculty itself. So that's why I'm here, that's why I'm speaking up here, and I think that if after the investigation there is a cause for removal, I think that you're making a very big mistake. And like I said, the disservice would be to the students that she represents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hello.
You need to sign in, hon.
I'm already signed in.
Wonderful.
My name is Janine Hasbrook. This is my first board meeting also, and I am also here to speak on this teacher. I'm also speaking from my heart and from my daughter. This particular coach has coached my daughter since sixth grade. I have watched this teacher go above and beyond, not just for my child, but for many children. After sports, made sure these children ate, protected them. There are many students who did not want to continue with sports and wouldn't have graduated last year if it wasn't for this teacher. I've seen the video. Was it a bad song choice? It's something that I wouldn't have played because of the fact it's not my era. My era for music was much worse than what was played today. She did a dance. She never mouthed the words, she never sang the song. There's other teachers who have also made TikToks with the same word in the song. If you're going to penalize one, you might as well do the whole school. It's not fair. She's a good teacher, and there's very few of them left.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hello, this is my first meeting too here. I was one of her students, I'm a graduate from here. She really taught me a lot, and I saw her, she had a lot of love for all her students, and she still does, even for those who graduated already. There was times where it was tough for everybody, you know, we never really won like any soccer games, lacrosse games, but we always pushed through no matter what. We still joined the next year, not because, you know, it's a sport, but because we just love the environment with her. And, sorry, I just get a little nervous. Yeah, I agree with them too. She always pushed us to do our best, she fed us all the time. She would even ask me, like, I was, I always drove, she would ask me, she was like, oh, can you pick up a blend order? I would go pick it up, it would be for me and her, or for like, you know, other students as well. Yeah, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. May I ask, did you sign in too?
Oh, yeah, I signed in, yeah.
You people really have it down, you're embarrassing me as I'm clubbing up.
How y'all doing? My name's Jermaine McCray, and I'm here to speak on that subject too. She was great to my kids, like, my kids love her. My kid's in college right now, and he asked me to come here personally to speak on his behalf. She's just a great person, man, like, yeah, she danced to the TikTok. I mean, just like she said, like, it's, it's, it's worse being done, like, she's great for the kids, she's very great for the kids, she's a great person, like, and she do it from the heart. Yeah, I mean, she get a paycheck, but she, everything she do come from the heart. So y'all need to take a long look at that, man.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabriella Moreau, and I'm in the class of 2025. I'm an NJROTC cadet and a New York State Scholar-Athlete. I'm a varsity cheerleader, and I'm also a varsity lacrosse player. I've played lacrosse for a long time. Last year, I was so excited to play in high school as I wasn't able to in middle school due to COVID. Last year, I made it onto the varsity team as a freshman. It was an honor to be a part of that team. It was such a positive experience because of the people and, most importantly, the coaches. Today, I was happy entering school because I was going to lacrosse afterwards. I then find out that there was a video going around of my coach, and that's when I knew that lacrosse practice would be canceled today.
I'm going to interrupt you just for a second, could you put the microphone down a little for you?
Okay.
Thank you.
The video, that is why we are all here in this room today. That video shouldn't have been posted, and I think everybody in this room knows that, but what also shouldn't have been done is Gage being taken away from us. This lacrosse team, we are like a family. We all may not be close, but we are when we are on that field. We may not always be win, but we try. Not one of us on that team gives up. You want to know why we don't give up? It's because Gage reminds us not to. Gage not being able to coach for the season is like breaking our family apart. She makes sure we play to our full potential, and even when we don't, she always lifts us up. I remember during Apple Fest, I was doing terrible on that field, like I was having some type of mental block. She pulled me to the side and gave me some tips, and one thing I remember her saying is, be the lacrosse player that I know you can be. And that will always stick with me. Everybody, everybody that I know has always some, has something positive to say about Gage. Never once have I heard anybody talk negative about her. I want you guys to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hello, my name is Melissa. I know Ms. Gage because she was my coach for soccer and lacrosse. I'm not one to speak for many people, but I can speak for my friends. They are very shy people who are not ones to get out of their shell. So the first day that we tried out for a sport, I think Ms. Gage was the key to break them out of their shell and who they are today. I'm not going to speak for everyone, but I can speak for some of our former students who have some things to say, as one being named Colin Tash, and he has some things to say. Hello, good evening, Middletown Board of Education. My name is Colin Tash. I graduated class of 2022, and I'm currently serving in the U.S. Army. I'm writing to the board tonight and am about amazing teacher, coach, and human being. This person is Ms. Gage. My interactions with Ms. Gage from grades 10 to 12 have been nothing but positive, developmental, and supportive. On many occasions, Ms. Gage has helped mean other students by being a good listener, advice giver on our rough days, and our biggest cheerleader on our good days. She is a great leader and will always be seen working alongside our athletes to show her dedication to the growth and success. Among the students, Ms. Gage is one of the greatest, as she is among the few staff that truly cares for her students more than her job. Not having Ms. Gage in Middletown High School is a mistake and ultimately takes away from her students whom she has such a great impact on. I can honestly say that without the guidance and support from Ms. Gage, present and future students will lose a very healthy piece of Middletown High School's blueprint for successful students and leaders that previous generations have continued to benefit from. As you can see, Ms. Gage has had an impact on many students' lives, so I think you guys should consider the quickliness that you guys have to fire her and take her away from her team. I think if we were to go around the room here and all say that we've all listened to a song that has had a word like that and most likely danced to it, we would all probably raise our hand. So the fact that you're taking this out of proportion that quickly is a huge mistake, and you'd be causing a lot of trauma and a lot of bad things happening if you take her away. Thank you.
I am assuming that everyone has signed in?
Yes, I have.
I'd like to remind you that it does involve personnel that we really should not be mentioning the person's name.
Sorry, I just got a little thing saying microphone check. See, I told you, I'm really. Just a reminder, please not mention the person's name because it is a personnel matter.
It's a standing policy normally designed to protect the personnel.
Right.
You can make the, make your statement in support of a, someone who's special to you, but just don't mention the name. That's across the board rule, whether it's this case or any other situation that's come before our board.
Good evening, my name is Nala Trigano, I'm a senior here at the high school, and I am the starting goalie, varsity goalie for lacrosse. So my coach means a lot to me, and I feel like this situation isn't being thought about on all spectrums. I feel like you're only looking at what she did and how it's, and not how it's going to affect everybody she has impacted, because was it the smartest thing to do? No, but everybody has done it before, and I feel like there should be, like, I feel like there should be justice all around. Like, if you're going to do it to one, you have to do it to everybody, because I could name on my fingers toes and everything else, any other teacher who has done much worse than Gage and has not have been reprimanded to this extent. So the fact that she was dancing to a TikTok, not saying the words, I understand she had the shirt on, but I just feel like you should think about how it's going to affect everybody that she has positively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Mr. Estrada. Did you sign in, Mr. Estrada?
I did not, so I'm one of the ones that will now. Good evening, everybody. So coming in here this evening, I just had intended just to watch the meeting because I hadn't been here in a little while, and I really don't even know what's going on from, but have gathered some information as each of the speakers has come on. And I learned a couple of years ago when I was facing an illness that life has its challenges, and you give people a lot of second chances. I believe in that strongly. I've been on that side of the table, so I'm not going to get involved in all of the personnel back and forth, because I do understand from your perspective, some actions that you may or may not take, but I hope that you keep in mind that people do make mistakes and that there are other alternatives. As we all know, we've all been involved in industry and personnel, and we've counseled employees, and we've terminated employees, and we've hired employees, but the ability to, you know, put something in a file or maybe use this as a learning situation for not only the students but the staff as well, because we often tell our students, our scholars, that if you fail in anything, that use it as a learning experience. So hopefully, when you're coming down to figure out what you're going to do in this particular situation, that you keep that in mind and allow people to, you know, honestly make a mistake. Obviously, you know more about the situation than I do, but hopefully, if there was not any malice involved and you consider it as really truly being a mistake by an individual, that we use it as a learning experience. The only other thing I'd like to comment on is about your meeting. I think in the past, when we've seen a large amount of students being honored, that you perhaps kind of moved them to the front of the agenda in place of action items and allowed them, you know, they haven't had dinner, they've been in school all day, and they got to get up really early to come back into this building tomorrow, just from an efficiency standpoint in the future, if you can do that, that I think they would appreciate it. And I think that's kind of what you guys have done in the past as well. And in regards to, you know, back and forth, I think all of you should have one shot at the apple, you have your four minutes, but typically, you don't allow dialogue between spectators and your, and the board, and I don't think it should be a debate between each of you, counterpoint, counterpoint, it's just going to make the meeting that much longer. So I think if every board member has their opportunity, make your points in four minutes, that's plenty of time, and then you move on to the next person. But somebody then counterpointing that person is just making the meeting that much longer, and it becomes very frustrating for the folks back here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Estrada. Is there anyone else that would like? I do say on our, I think one of the things, we had the two public hearings tonight also, which made the meeting much longer, so I apologize.
How are you? So first, I want to say a couple of things. I didn't come here, actually, to speak on the topic that is at hand, I came here to speak about something else. Being a mom is tough. Being a midi is very tough. We hold our kids to high standards, as parents, we hold them to high standards. Being a staff member, a mom, and a former midi, it's tough. We raise our kids to respect each other, to respect the rules, to give their all, to go out into the community in a positive way, to represent Middletown in a positive way, and to do the best we can. We ask our kids to do community service, we ask them to be kind to one another, we ask them to forgive. And it's funny, because Mr. Estrada, you used the word malice, and that's probably one of the best words I heard tonight. There was no malice in anybody's intentions. A lot of times, we do things in error with good intentions. I hear that all the time, you know, if you have good intentions, you're forgiven if you do something wrong. So I don't think when this situation happened, there was any malice. I think it was a video that was played, probably not the best video, let's be honest, but I believe, Janine, like you said, unfortunately, I'm a 1986 graduate, I'm aging myself. There was a lot worse music out there, unfortunately, and you're right, we could do better. We've tried to do better by telling our kids, I have a new driver, you can't play that music in the car with me, you know? Whether it's whatever it is, we try to do better. As parents, we try to do better. But we have to understand that there are other people who spend six, seven, eight hours a day with our kids who are still trying to do better. They're still trying to make our kids better. So I think if there was no malice in this, and I think truly, it was just somebody on their off time, which is very hard to hang up your district person, your mom person, your mentor person, your sports person, and realize that they're still just a person, and they do make mistakes. That's all I'm going to say on that.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Moore. Many of you guys may know me because I ran for school board last year, but my purpose tonight is actually to just ask the board for some clarity. I'm new to this district, new to this city. I've been here for two years, and everybody know I'm pretty much a huge advocate in my kids' lives and everyone else that serves in this community. I have stepped up when others don't. I have stepped up when others don't. I have been a voice for many of the children that are here within this district, whether I'm outside in the streets or inside of Target or Walmart. I made myself a presence to be felt and be able to hear the concerns of many of the young children out there. As everyone knows, we've been an advocate for seeing the MBK program come back to light. And to my surprise, I emailed, I won't say the respectful new leader's name, and I got a response from one of the board members. Now, what really took me off of it, off of the entire experience of me contacting as a parent in this district, I feel like I have been constantly redirected to a fellow board member on here for a number of occasions. And I find it to be kind of alarming because I think my silence is probably bothering many here, right? But I'm not going to be the one to have to look to see, to have to check in with a certain fellow board member, to be able to feel, to be included in anything that goes on in this district. Based off my background and the many of young scholars and young adults that have, you know, transitioned into post-secondary degrees and 500 fortune companies that I've been able to assist and navigate, I find it offensive that I have to be told I need to see if I fit the criteria to be a mentor in this city. I think you guys should really think otherwise because I have been most present, the most active on everything you guys have done for this district. So to see that I have to check in or find a way to be evaluated to be a part of a program that serves the black and brown of students in this district is quite alarming, quite alarming. Take the time to see those who actually step up to the plate and respect them, regardless of the differences, regardless of the fact that I actually ran for school board. Separate that aside and put the kids in place that actually really matter because it's not about me. I don't need accolades, I'm not running for office or any major executive seat somewhere. I don't care less about that. I have three young kids in this district and I made a financial decision to bring my kids here, build a house here, and see that they get the education that they deserve. And I step up daily, no matter what it is, countless times, to make sure that my kids and everyone else that they are with, their fellow peers are well represented with leadership and people that are of high caliber and character. So take the opportunity to stop redirecting me to people that I have lost respect in and take me for someone that's serious, that wants to see actual change in this district. Maybe you guys won't have all these situations, this karma keep coming back to play with you guys because of that. You're doing things wrong and then you wonder why. Listen to the parents, the concerned parents that actually step up daily. Ask my teachers, ask my kids' teachers. I'm on them daily because I hold them at a high level. They whip my kids six, seven hours out of the day. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
My name's Carol. I'm a scholar of Class 2025 and I'm just going to read something that someone said that they couldn't be here.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but could you just raise your volume a little? We can't, I know I can't, I don't know about my fellow board members if they can hear you.
This?
That's good.
All right. This is about the coach again. It reads, "She has been in my life since seventh grade. She is the reason I became an athlete I am today. Everyone knows me, number four in soccer and lacrosse. I put my heart and soul out on the field and continue to return to Middletown High School to help the program I was there. So much they told me to apply. The coaches have always concurly to me after every game. The hard work and motivation never would have happened if she was never my coach. She pushes her students to be successful, to have a future with her. She never let any one athlete, talent, go to waste. She would find colleges, speak to people she knows to have you continue. She put her students first. So many people walked the stage because of her. Bet you didn't know that your favorite football player almost stopped coming to high school because football season was over, but she pushed them to continue and they walked on stage in June at that. If she loses her job, the soccer and lacrosse program will be destroyed. Many of the athletes we have in this school will quit their senior year because she isn't there. There is nothing wrong with dancing and having a personal life out of work. She never sang a single word of the song and you can't say it because the song has the N-word in it because every song nowadays has the word in it. If she's being canceled for that, then you should cancel everyone else. Thank you so much."
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
My name is Janaya Robinson. Okay. So I'm here to speak on our captain of the soccer team. So, yeah. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Nada Montoya and NJROTC Executive Officer, the former soccer team captain and a New York State athlete. I would like to apologize for not being able to make it out tonight, but I will support my coach when it counts. The love for her is huge. She ultimately was a motherly figure and although the video circulating was a mistake that shouldn't have happened, I do, however, believe it was taken out of proportion and hope you do consider your decision on taking away this inspirational, loving, caring person that ultimately has made the biggest impact on everyone's lives. The way she made our problems hers and always took her under her wings is the way we're here today to represent her. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. We have no letters as much. Okay. We'll now have the superintendent's update on the grade three to eight and graduation data, please. And I think Mr. Tuttle, too, then will follow you with the budget.
Yep, Mrs. Broad.
Oh, sorry.
Madam President, I just want to, I want to just say something real quick while they're going. I'm not going to be here for roundtable.
Okay.
I think you all know I'm in a lot of pain right now and so I wanted to stay for the public comments, but I do want to, I do want to make sure that we clarify that as all of these wonderful students have come and spoken and everybody has come up and spoken, that we clarify that no decisions have been made.
Thank you.
And so I just want to make sure to clarify, no decisions have been made about anything yet, so I don't want anyone to assume that, that, that any decisions have been made. It's, as is said, it's under investigation. So, all right?
Thank you for the clarification and I do appreciate it. Good evening.
Tonight, we'll be reviewing data from the New York State Grades 3 through 8 ELA and Mathematics Assessment for the 2021-22 school year, along with an overview of the NICE-LAT, which are the New York State English as a Second Language Achievement Test, and then Cohort 2018 Graduation Data. Before we begin, I just want to review some terms that you'll hear throughout the presentation. The first one is NICE-ET, New York State Education Department. NYS 3 through 8, that refers to the 3 through 8 ELA and Mathematics Testing. ELA, English Language Arts. CBT, Computer-Based Testing. NICE-LAT, New York State's English as a Second Language Achievement Test, and then Cohort. New York State uses Cohort Model to identify scholars in the year they enter ninth grade. So when we say Cohort 2018, that means they start at ninth grade in 2018. All right, so I'm going to begin by just giving you an overview of the New York State Grades 3 through 8 testing to talk about the test design. So each year, scholars take the English Language Arts and Math Tests in Grades 3 through 8. It's a test that happens every spring and it takes two days. It's an untimed test, which means our scholars have as much time as they need to complete the test. Schools have, school districts have the option of using a computer-based test or a paper-based test. We've used computer-based tests now. This will be the second year in the road that we've used computer-based testing. And any scholar that receives accommodations for English language learners or scholars with 504 or IEP plan get those accommodations during these tests. For ELA, again, it's a two-day exam. The first day is reading, the second day is writing. For the 2021 assessment, so last spring, session one was all multiple choice questions. Depending on the grade, there were anywhere from 24 to 33 multiple choice questions. Scholars were given four to five passages and answer corresponding multiple choice questions. The estimated time to complete the exam for scholars in Grades 3 was 50 to 70 minutes and then Grade 8, 80 to 90 minutes. For session two, so the second day of the test, it's writing responses only. In Grades 3 through 6, there were six short response and one extended response. In Grades 7 and 8, there were seven short response and one extended response. The estimated average time to complete the exam for Grade 3 was 70, 80 minutes and then Grade 8, 90 to 100 minutes. Just an example, so this is from the fifth grade ELA session one, the reading test. So in this example, or this is actual question from the test, scholars would read the passage and then they would answer a set of multiple choice questions related to the passage. And from the fifth grade exam from last year as well, this is a day two, the writing portion. So here, scholars would read the passage and then they would answer short and extended response questions. At the top is a example of a short response question and at the bottom, an example of a extended response question. Last year, for the mathematics exam, there were 25 to, or for day one, there were 25 to 33 multiple choice questions. The number of questions depends on the grade. The average time to complete the test for Grade 3 was 55 to 65 minutes and Grade 8, 80 to 90 minutes. For the second day or session two, there were 15 questions, which were meant to multiple choice, short response and extended response questions. Depending on the grade, there were anywhere from six to seven short responses and for all grades 3 through 8, there was one extended response question. The average time to complete the test for Grade 3 was 50 to 70 minutes and Grade 8, 75 to 85 minutes. All right, again, another example from the, or another actual question from the Grade 5 math exams. This is day one, the multiple choice portion. So there is a problem and then scholars choose between A, B, C, or D. Thank you. All right, and this is an example of a day two short and extended response question, also from Grade 5. So just, I'll give you a chance to take a look at it before I just write down some parts of the question. So our scholars are being asked to do several things in these short and extended responses. So they're not only asked to solve the problem, but they are also asked to explain the process that helps them solve the problem and show the work. New York State Department of Education has acknowledged the impact of COVID-19 on state assessments and with the following statement, "Due to the ongoing impacts of COVID-19, it may not be appropriate to compare 2021-2022 New York State standardized assessment results with results from prior years." The state does encourage school districts to use multiple measures in addition to the state tests. Some of the assessments that we use in Grades 3 through 8 include the Fontaine Spinel Benchmark Assessment that measures reading. So if you hear the term, hear Level A, B, C, D, E, that's the reading level, so that's Fontaine Spinel. Writing benchmarks in Grades 3 through 8, where scholars are given a prompt and they write and we have a rubric that measures that. The NWA Measures of Academic Progress, also referred to as the MAP, that measures both reading and math. And then midterms and final exams are given in our middle schools for ELA, math, social studies, science, and world language. In conjunction with the other assessments, state test data does help us inform decision-making around resource allocation to support instruction, supports Lincoln Scholarship programs such as Academic Intervention Services, or AIS, and the extended day instruction, and helps us to guide budgetary decisions on resource allocation. I do want to point out that we do not use our state tests for promotion or retention And so before I go through the data, just want to point out that Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4, what that means, so the state assigns four levels. Level 1, Level 2 is considered below proficiency, Level 3 and 4 considered proficient. So the graph that you're looking at now shows the ELA data from the 2021 Spring Administration. The midi blue bar represents our district data and the light blue bar represents the state data. For the scholars that took the exam, 33% of our scholars were proficient in Grades 3 And then in mathematics, again, the midi blue bar represents district data and the light blue state data. And here, 25% proficiency for the scholars that took the tests in Grades 3 through 8. So that's why I'd like to highlight just some of the steps that we are taking to help improve our proficiency across the district. First, we recognize that if our scholars are not here, they can't learn. So this year, we looked at our attendance protocols to check why and we strengthened those up. We also are, we hired student support facilitators to help with attendance. Once they're in the building, we also recognize that we need them to feel welcome, feel belonged, and so we worked on putting connection before content. So just some of the things that we have done, we've, we have our advisories, where we started that October, November, so every Friday morning, we spend, start off the day with advisory activities, K-12. We also had three reset, refresh, and connect days. We also had three reset, refresh, and connect days where we dedicated, there were half-days that are dedicated just to doing activities with our scholars. And we still are continuing with the SEL program that we, that we've been doing for the past few years. We've also increased the number of social workers that we have in district, so we went from three to 15. So every school now has at least two social workers to provide additional support for our scholars. Continuing with the connection to school, so research shows that if scholars can connect to school with activities, it helps improve attendance, helps improve academic. So we continue to offer, and we've increased the number of intramural and club offerings, though before school and after school, that are non-academic. Girls Who Code, so we have that in all of our buildings. Chess Club, eSports, Mindfully Fit, Soul Sisters, sensory-friendly intramurals, and media club are just a few examples of the clubs and intramurals that we offer to help build connection to school. We provide targeted support in academic and non-academic connections to school through summer programs. These programs, again, help our scholars stay connected to school, but also keep them engaged during the summer. Last year, we offered 21 summer programs. In addition to our traditional summer school, we offered 17 summer enrichment programs or camps. So some of the camps we offered, Art Camp, Biomedicine Camp, eSports Music Camp, seventh and eighth grade Accelerated Math Camp, Robotics Camp, Sensory Camp, STEM, so Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics Camp, Sports Camp, and Theater Camp. With the Sports Camp, we offered four weeks of the Sports Camp, and it wasn't just sports, it was two hours of writing, and then two hours of sports instruction for each week of the, for every day for that particular camp. So it wasn't just sports, but we also emphasized writing during that time. All these programs were free. We offered breakfast and lunch. We also provided transportation by bus to make it more accessible to all of our families. And this summer, we plan to offer similar opportunities for our scholars. Earlier, I mentioned some of the assessments that we use to help us progress monitoring and adjust our instruction. So the NWA MAP exam, that is a computer-based test. It's an adaptive test that we give three times a year. So we give it in the spring, or sorry, the fall, the winters. We just are wrapping up the winter administration, and we'll do it again in the spring. And that allows us to see how scholars are progressing. It's a test that's used nationally, and it provides our teachers with data as to how individual scholars are doing, as well as seeing whole class data. It helps to inform small group instruction in different ways that we could support our scholars in math and reading. The Fontes Spinel Benchmark Assessment, I mentioned earlier, but that, again, assess reading in our elementary schools. Skills chats are just very quick assessments, so after a teacher teaches a unit, or a small unit, they'll give a short assessment, and it provides immediate feedback as to where scholars go. And again, that can help inform small group instruction or individual instruction as to where our scholars are at. Writing benchmarks, midterms, final exams, and performance assessment. To help with reading comprehension, we implemented the Foundations and Just Words Literacy Program. This is a tier-three support that we provide in our AIS and Special Education classrooms. We use foundations in grades kindergarten through three, and then in fourth grade through 12, we use just words. Last year, we trained our teachers in this program, and this is our first full year of implementation. This program focuses on decoding. Decoding is what helps us understand words. You're thinking about when you're standardizing words, but that's the skill that decoding addresses, and it's a key foundational skill for literacy. We also renewed our focus on lunica, esthilita, and escale. Sorry, I took French. And, and it's for English language learners. So we started this back in the 2019, 2020 school year, but with the pandemic, it was interrupted, so we're picking that focus back up to help support English language learners. Last spring, the board generously approved the increase of our instructional leaders in each building, and this has added to the support that our teachers receive on a daily basis. So we have instructional support for math and English Language Arts, and each of our elementary and middle school and high school buildings, every school has dedicated instructional leaders. This has increased the opportunities for coaching, professional development. It's also increased the amount of data-driven conversations that we can have with staff. In the middle school, we added an additional period, so we went from an eight-period day to a nine-period day, which has also provided the dedicated time to have that conversation with teachers around student performance. We still continue to do small group instruction, and just some of the different assessments that I mentioned earlier help support that work. And we have our EDI program, so we continue with our extended day instruction program. We began in December. We have it at our elementary and middle schools. It's an hour, Monday through Thursday, support in math and ELA. This year, we have it broken up into four to five cycles, so depending on the level, and each cycle is dedicated to a particular skill. We have about 300 scholars participating in the ELA program in grades in elementary and middle schools, and 330 in math. So again, this is one hour every day, Monday through Thursday. We also are continuing to connect with our families in schools. This year, we added quarterly town halls for each, a school has a quarterly town hall, an information sharing session, either in person or virtual. We also held family nights to provide parents, guardians, and caregivers with ways to support their scholars at home. This year, we held three family nights, one at the middle school and two for elementary. And just wanting to close this part of the presentation, just to talk about this year's testing. So we had our CBT practice, our computer-based testing practice. That's a requirement by New York State for any school that participates in CBT testing. We have to have a practice test, so this was a good opportunity for us to work out any kinks with the technology. Also, I suppose our scholars, if they can experience what the platform looks like, we use the mathematics assessment because it has math tools to use, so we started with that one. April 19th and the 20th, we will have the ELA exam, and May 2nd and May 3rd will be the mathematics exam, and we will be holding informational sessions on March 7th from six to seven, and March 14th from five to six. The March 7th will be virtual, and then the March 14th will be in person to provide more information about the state testing. Alright, next, I will introduce, or I'm going to introduce Mrs. Linda Rivera-Brodt. She's going to talk about the Nicest Lot testing.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I just want to take a moment to, you know, just celebrate the diversity that we have here in the district with 23 beautiful languages other than English from 19 global locations. And with that, our scholars that speak another language than English take an assessment as well. And that is called the New York State English as a Second Language Test, or the Nicest Lot. And so tonight, just very briefly, I wanted to share a little bit about the test. The purpose of the test is basically to measure English language proficiency. And unlike the other tests, it actually spans from grade K through grade 12 and is administered in grade bands. So there are six grade bands. It is grade K, our kindergartners are very special as they're just learning, all the way to our graduates, all the way to grade 12. So we have grade K band, we have grade band one, two, which is combined, three, four, then five, six is clustered, seven, eight, and then nine through 12 is entirely clustered as a unit. So this test provides important information, not only at the state level, but also here locally regarding the English language development, or the ELP they call it, and actually provides us a really grounded knowledge of instructional practices that we can improve around four modalities and the minutes of service that each one of our English language learners gets. So with that, it is based upon performance level descriptors, which our targets of measurements are based basically on a rubric. So for example, there are four modalities that each scholar is tested in, that's listening, reading, and writing. And within that, there are, dependent upon the grade band, performance level indicators. So for example, at grade K, for a scholar who is being assessed, it might be on words, phrases, letters, initial sounds. And as we move to the middle school level, it'll be more complex against text structures, text evidence, finding claim, understanding a comprehensive passage. As we move to the higher levels of, the upper levels on the targets of measurements, we're really talking about really deep and sustaining understanding of text, finding evidence, improving their, their claim as well. So one of the things that the Nicest Lot really gives us base knowledge of is the level of language proficiency, and there are five main levels. The first four you can see is entering, which is also considered level one, and by any means, that doesn't mean that a child is doing poorly. It's just that they are learning basic words, phrases in the English language. And language development takes over five to seven years. That's what research shows. So it is okay for someone to be at the entering level if they just entered the United States or joining our district, and just learning simple phrases and just how to communicate in our language. As you move up the scale, it's a level two or emerging, and this really shows, you know, dependence upon supports academically and linguistically. As we move to the level three or transitioning, that means they're showing some sort of independence. And as we move to the next level, expanding, they're showing greater independence. And at the final level, in which a scholar that is learning English as a second language, they're considered commanding, or they have a pretty good command of the English language, and they've met the criteria as a scholar who is pretty much English proficient. So I'm just gonna just pause for a minute and just have this etched in your mind, because there's a terminology that I'll be using on the last slide, which is two slides from now. Don't want to take up too much of your time, but it's the terms active and inactive. So the scholars that you see at the first four levels, entering, emerging, transitioning, and expanding, those are considered active Ls that are receiving a great number of minutes, up to 180 minutes a week of instruction of language support. Commanding scholars are considered inactive, but they still receive two years of additional support as transitional time. But the state sees them as English proficient, but affords us the opportunity to provide two years of additional support. So the test dates for the Nicest Lot run concurrently and simultaneously with both the ELA and the mathematics state test that Mrs. Adoma went over. So the test runs, it begins April 17th, soon after spring break, and expands all the way to and concludes on May 26th. And as I spoke about earlier, there are four modalities. So the first modality, speaking, is administered one-to-one. So therefore, there's a longer window or period of time, because each scholar is tested one-to-one by their educator. For the listening, reading, and writing, those portions run from May 15th to May 26th, and they are also untimed areas, and they also are composed of multiple choice, short, constructed response, and extended response, similar to the ELA. So the reason why I refer to active and inactive, because I wanted to share with you on my final slide, the trend of English language learners after, you know, COVID basically began in 2019. So we had 840 active, however, 844 inactive. So if we took that commanding group, that's considered English proficient with two years of additional support, there were just four additional scholars. But as you can see, 21, 22, we had 919, and that actually jumped from 844 to 1,300 scholars. Currently, in the Middletown City School District, we have 947 active scholars for the levels one through four, and we have currently, right now, 1,501 and growing. And so this, again, is a test that measures English language proficiency for our diverse community of scholars, and it is quite a lengthy test, and our scholars receive much support from our staff. So a shout out to them as well. Thank you. And I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Green, Superintendent.
Yeah, and just wanted to remind folks that this evening, the presentation that we are discussing, there's a lot of information on it, a lot to digest, so it'll be available online, as well as the translated, the full translated version of this presentation will be available online. So I get to talk about graduation data, which is incredible for Middletown High School. So what you have here in front of you is the class of 2022, which is the 2018 cohort. And when you look at this data, this is data that we're incredibly proud of, all students achieving a graduation rate of 91%, which the district has never realized before. So it's an incredible accomplishment, much to be celebrated. When you look at this graduation data, the 91%, this reflects our graduation data, which is complete. So that means that it includes January, June, and August of 2022. And when you look at this data, it's important to note that we have significantly, when you kind of dig down into those ethnicity and subpopulation breakouts, Middletown has significantly outperformed the New York State graduation rate in every category except for white as a subpop. So this is just a little bit of a different way to look at that same exact data. It's just a visual representation. So what I did was try and identify that the class of 2022, which is the cohort, 2018 cohort, is that golden rod color, where it says class of 2022. And then it's just comparing where we're at over a course of three years. When you look at this graduation data and see that we are at a graduation rate of 91%, you know, there's a few things that we acknowledge and realize. As Mrs. Adoma spoke about earlier, one of the things that we need to do is address chronic absenteeism. That's across the board. We cannot educate young people that aren't here. And we also recognize that with a graduation rate of 91%, in order for us to start to make those incremental grains, we have to continue to address our dropout rate. We have been making progress in addressing our dropout rate, and so with the class of 2018 cohort, had one of the lowest dropout rates at 5%, which we're really proud of, but going to continue to dig in and do more work there. And when you just look across the subpopulations, the breakouts there from the, to the right of the graph, you'll see that we have made great strides with our special education scholars and our L scholars. I mean, looking at where we were even just three years ago, this isn't the full historical look at our graduation rate. And then when you see when the newspaper starts to put out information on graduation rate, remember that the newspaper does not report the same data that the New York State Education Department utilizes for any of their reporting or accountability measures. So you could see a number inside a newspaper or US World News and Report, and they're only reporting the graduation rate as of June. So they're not including the full four-year graduation rate, and the state doesn't recognize that number. The state recognizes the full graduation rate, so if you were to pop up onto our school report card, that's the graduation rate that you would see. And so what we wanted to just recognize is that there is an opportunity for you to go onto the report card yourself, dig into it. The state is, has some of the information within there. You can find grades three through eight information in there. You can dig down by individual school, grade level, different subpopulations. There's a whole host of information that is really informative for families, and definitely the information that we use to guide decision-making here in terms of resource allocation and program development. And then just another reminder that the grades three through eight tests are coming up soon. We are really making a push to make sure that every one of our young people gets an opportunity to sit for this exam, so that when we sit and look at our data, it's the fullest picture of our young people, as opposed to, you know, where we have high opt-out rates, which then when we're reviewing that data, it's not a true look at how our district is performing. So we want to provide as much information as we can to our families. So we want to provide as much information as we can to our families and the school community. So March 7th and March 14th, just another plug for those two opportunities. March 7th will be a virtual opportunity. Families can learn more about the upcoming testing sequence. And then March 14th will be an in-person opportunity and more available to ask individual and one-to-one questions at that in-person opportunity. And we want to just thank the Board of Education and the school community. We've realized this was a lot of information. It's a lot to cover. This is always a hefty topic, but one that is incredibly important to cover, to make sure that we are letting our families know that we're tuned into this data and using this data as one of the pieces to the puzzle, to making sure that we provide opportunities for success for everybody.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Creed.
Thank you.
And I missed our other two representatives there, Ms. Linda Bratt and Camille, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. I don't have a question. I just have to say I was surprised to find out. I always thought that it, the tests were timed.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Yes.
I think we need to...
John.
Excuse me, I want to go back a minute. That's fine. I think I applaud everyone for what we're doing in math and reading. However, the scores are terrible.
Yes.
In three through eight. They're just, it's, it's, it's boggles the mind, really. And I know we're doing all we can, but something is just not clicking.
Yeah, I, we definitely agree. I think it's just important to acknowledge that the data that you're seeing with regards to those New York State assessments does not tell the full picture. We have had, over the course of the last years, since New York State had a big movement for individuals to opt out of testing, we have had higher than our neighboring school districts opt-out rates. So the data that you're looking at isn't an entire grade levels worth of assessment data. Even with that, we absolutely agree that work has to be done. Those proficiency rates that are reflected on the New York State exams aren't acceptable. They are one piece of the full profile of information that we look at when we are determining the best pathway forward for a young person. We have put a tremendous amount of thinking and problem-solving this past summer into our proficiency rates, which we are, you know, incredibly pleased that the Board gave us their support in terms of providing more direct-to-teacher support inside buildings. That's where it happens. Our educators have the best chance to make impact on our young people, and so we need to make sure that the instructional strategies that utilizing in their classrooms are meeting the needs of our population. So I think that the addition of the instructional leaders inside buildings to provide that academic coaching and support is going to be something that we see fruits of over the course of the next several years. And I do think, though, that, you know, we have tremendous programming for our young people. We need to do better on our attendance. We need to dig into that and make sure, especially at those younger levels, when our elementary, you know, young people, they don't have control over whether they get to school in the morning or not. And so we need to make sure, which we've been putting intentional focus on, engaging with families in different ways to figure out what are the roadblocks that are preventing our families from, who are having a difficult time with regular attendance at school, you know, from engaging with us in that way. So we've been looking at the solution from a variety of different lenses, and we are sure that we're going to see improvement in the coming years.
Yeah, I just want to add along with Mr. Perino, I want to see our children, especially in the younger grades, this is the foundation years, master those three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. I remember there was a time way back at the beginning of the century when no child left behind, that one of our school, elementary schools, was listed in the, in the naughty list of the federal government. We didn't want to go back there. And in the same way that we've been able to hit that 91% at the high school level, I want to see us focus a lot for the, for the younger children, so they, so that could start at the lower level. And with that, I also want to commend Mr. Adoma and Ms. Bratt for the team, for the work you're doing here, establishing strong foundations here to address those things, especially with the growing ELL community, which we have a growing population that English is not the first language. So that, I think, raises the challenge, but also opens the opportunities. And finally, I do want to commend our district with the steps to engage the parents, the family curriculum, NICE, the town halls, family learn and play, I mean, all these activities to make sure that parents are engaged and informed. I think at some point on the road, we might want to consider maybe having parent-staff committees working together, something that I've spoken about before. But I do believe we're in that direction, and I commend the steps being taken there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one other comment about something that was in action that we did, which, you know, we're really hopeful is going to dig into this issue. Never before has the district looked at elementary scheduling through the eyes of a master schedule. Typically, a master schedule is something that is reserved for high school programming, and the elementary schedule isn't always dialed in in that same way. And for the very first time this winter, we began engaging with educators, administrators, and our PTOs, and a master schedule, to talk about what does the elementary schedule look like, and how can we provide more opportunity to focus on literacy and mathematics, to make sure that we're getting our biggest amplification of the actual instructional minutes that we have our young people with us.
I have also a comment. I agree with my two colleagues. I couldn't help but notice that our school's scores are considerably lower than the rest of New York State. I remember one of our community members, Bishop Rollins, had come in and really questioned our math scores. And although data can be a good tool for driving us in our movement forward, and although, well, I'll finish that first, but when I go out in the community, for those of our graduates who stay here in the community, many of their first jobs are as cashiers in the stores, and if they can't count back the change, you know what I'm saying? I want, that's, that's like a measurement also. Can they count back the change to me? Can they engage in a, in a, in a conversation with me? I think sometimes the data becomes more important than the learning, and I'm not saying that's always the case here, but as a former teacher, teacher still, I guess, I see that there are unique experiences, and when we teach to the tests, as the old adage goes in education, we run a risk of losing some of those life opportunities in assessing just, in the students, the graduates' abilities. I also want to...
I just comment on that one thing, because I think, I love that you said that, because I think that it brings to light and really amplifies two really important points. One is that, I agree, like, the data is the data. We're not trying to hide from the data, and it is not meet our standard. But I love that you amplified that it's just one piece of the story, right? And when we are compared to New York State as a whole, we are put in with districts that look nothing like Middletown City School District, right? So we are really zoned in on our data and the multiple measures with which we use to determine success. And it means all of those things that you just talked about. It means success on an exam, a state exam, that's written for a particular type of learner in a particular type of setting, doesn't deem success in the real world in all circumstances, which is why we send 410 students to BOSI's to, you know, engage in their learning in different ways. You know, opportunities for them to explore hands-on trades or, you know, exploratory learning that isn't measured by success on a test, so that we hope when we put our young people out into the communities, they can have conversations, can engage, and can, you know, appropriately, you know, master some of those basic skills. So thank you for highlighting that, Mrs. Houston.
I had a couple more things I wanted to mention. One is the attendance, and I agree with you, but I don't think attendance is our only problem. And the money that our district gets compared to those other districts, I'd love to compare those numbers. How much money are they getting in state funding versus the test scores? And also, I think that the other point I was trying to make was literacy, because I recently watched a video about how graduation rates are measured, but we forget to check to see if our graduates, and I'm not saying all of ours are, but sometimes the graduates may have passed, but they're still illiterate or unable to do a basic math problem, don't know where the states are. Sometimes you see, I don't like it that they make it a joke, but sometimes we see comedians going out on the street with a microphone, saying, hey, do you know where Mexico is? Or where's Florida? Can you point that out on this map? Do you know the name of our president? Things like that. So those are markers as well, and I think that the data misses those, those portions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is one, one piece of our story, one piece of our story. It is not the totality of our story, and we need to do, we need to do better in this area, but we also need to provide opportunities for our incredible, incredible community, like what took place today here at the high school, to get in here and see that there is, you know, incredible, incredible educators and staff at all levels of the organization supporting this wonderful school community. And, you know, we are graduating scholars who are contributing much to our, to our, you know, to our community here and our global community.
May I have one question? But I guess, I'll yield to, to pitch first, and then...
Yeah, I just want to say, that was an incredible presentation. It was very exciting, very exciting for me. As a person who had three kids that went through the school system, and they, they don't live in Middletown, but they got mighty pride, so they still call me regularly. Like, I wish I had that when I was there, Dad, what's going on out there? I was like, a lot of big things is happening. And we just really, to me, it's like we're just getting started. And it's so exciting for me, because I know we're all pushing in the right direction. We're going to keep pushing. So we identify something that we need, there's a need, and we go after it. But the, the progress that we have made in a short period of time has been remarkable. And I commend all the administrators, the teachers, just all the staff that's involved in this district, because I see the change. Like I said, I've been here. I've been involved, so I've seen it, and it's exciting to me. So thank you for that presentation.
Yeah, it's a question or an idea. I know we've invested a lot in upgrading the high school facilities to allow learning and support services after-school hours. We looked into, or maybe considered maybe grants, to have like after-school remedial support program for, for children in the elementary schools, where kids could be either selective for it, if parents so wish, we'll provide them like a snack, and then maybe once or twice a week, they'll have like, it'll be like part after-school fund, but part also learning to help them with their English, math skills. I know some schools in the city, in New York City, have done that, worked, so I think something we might want to look into.
Yeah, we, that's a great idea, and I think, one, just to amplify the point that, you know, Mrs. Adoma was making earlier, is that we do have extended day programs for our young people, and, you know, it is important for them to continue to dig into math and literacy at that point. But remember, it's also, it's a very long day for our young people, and it's important for them also to engage with us, you know, in non-academic-based activities, so that the connection is very strong. And the summer programming that Mrs. Adoma oversaw this past summer with the help of Mr. Coats was incredible, because it was modeled directly after the America Scores Program, which is primarily utilized in school districts that are struggling in mathematics and literacy. And the basis of the program is that you cannot have just an academic-based program to provide high-impact support to young people. It has to be connected to something they're going to engage in and get their neurons firing in different ways. So we took an athletic component and said to them, come to us for five weeks in the summer and do a little bit of athletics, and then also engage in academic support. So we had our first sort of, you know, brush with that this past summer, and we're really expanding it this coming summer. Additionally, our jumpstart programs, they're opportunities for our young people in the summer to get in and see our programs and help make those transitions from really foundational years. And I think that we'll see good success, that we've, you know, started those programs and are beginning to expand them a bit more.
I guess, is that, just with the elementary program, so we do have an hour after school every day, or not every day, Monday through Thursday, and it starts off at dismissal, they'll have a little bit of play, and then they move into, you know, two days of math and then two days of ELA. So we currently have that in place for, at all elementary school buildings. We started that in December.
Thank you for that clarification, because I was going to ask about, I thought we had the extended day and that.
I just have another quick question. I noticed the graduation data charts that you provided don't have 2019 and 2020. Where did our students measure during those pandemic years?
Oh, I could easily provide them to you. I just utilized the actual overall graduation rate on the, the three-year look, right? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, we have, in the three-year look, I see 2016, 2017, 2018, but I don't see 2019 and 2020, but I do see 2022. So I was just wondering, did our numbers go up or down, or by how much?
Yeah, so what you're looking at is the cohort year. So the 2018 cohort is the class of 2022. So then 17 is 2021, and 18 is 2020. So I can go back five years if you wanted to, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how bad we did, or badly we did, or how great we did in those pandemic years, just because of all the isolation that the students were going through. It'd be nice to look back and see what we can do with that data.
Yeah, the one thing that, you know, is sort of at a, you know, an anomaly in those years, is that, and we're still in that system right now, is that the New York State Education Department dramatically changed what a graduation requirement looked like. So when you look back at those years, you do see us continuing to still grow. There isn't a dip. What districts across the state are waiting for at this point now is to see what will the New York State Education Department do in terms of graduation rates for the next five years. So they've done commissioning of educators and administrators from across the state to pull together and say, what lessons did we learn in COVID? What does proficiency look like, and how are we measuring our young people? Maybe it doesn't need to be just based on one region's exam that says that they're proficient. Maybe it's exactly what you talked about. Can they public speak? Can they have a conversation? Can they do basic skills? So, yeah, all good stuff. Thank you.
And I think my concern would be that if we go back, for last year, we did not have regions. This year, we are having regions. Is that correct?
It is, but remember, the young people that are coming up this year still had the opportunity to complete many of their high school credits under the COVID graduation changes. So if we're going to see a shift, it wouldn't be this year necessarily as much as the years following. However, it's still wait to be seen what the New York State Education Department is going to do, because we're not a district, the only district that's sitting in the same situation. Yeah.
Dreaded regions.
Thank you very much. I hope you guys have one more presentation in yet. So we're here tonight presenting the next component of the budget, which is the instructional component. And just to reset ourselves back on why we do the work we're doing here, is because we're always committed to fiscal responsibility, as well as creating safe environments and maximizing opportunities for our young people. And just to remind folks out there, and our teams here, is that the budget development process has looked very different. We, you know, took our cue from the Board last year and created several more opportunities for our team to engage with our community and our stakeholders in different ways as we develop the budget. And we sort of got to the end of the process, and that still didn't feel like enough. So when we came back this year and came to sort of, you know, building out what that would look like, we started much earlier with opportunities for the community to engage with us, to meet with us one-on-one in small groups, town halls, and we were getting tons of information and feedback about what was important to our communities and our families in terms of where we spend our, the dollar. So this is just a small representation of what those groups looked like and who those folks were. And then tonight, we are going to have Mr. Tuttle talk, dig into the 58% of our budget, which is the instructional component.
All right, thank you very much. So tonight, as always, we'll start with our budgeting assumptions, just to give you an overview of what we're dealing with, with the economic pressures. They seem to be mounting weekly as we keep going.
dig into the 58% of our budget, which is the instructional component.
All right, thank you very much. So tonight, as always, we'll start with our budgeting assumptions just to give you an overview of what we're dealing with, with the economic pressures. They seem to be mounting weekly as we keep going. Looking at the Consumer Price Index, which is the average, about four, but seems to be trending up more towards 6%, maybe 6.5%. You know, we're always dealing with our tax cap at 2%, our teacher retirement system at 10.5%, employee retirement system up to 16%. And those are the contributions that the district will make for each employee, right? So that's why we're looking at those, the teacher and ERS. And our health insurance premiums have seemed to trend it upward dramatically. And we're, maybe hopefully when COVID seizes a little bit more, we'll see that come down. We still have Bosie Services that averages about 5% increase for all their services. That's CTEC, that's special education and those programs. Contractual salaries up around estimated $7 million. We also have the voter approved Bosie's capital project, an estimated $1.5 million. That'll be our outlay for this year. And again, we get revenue back for each year that we're laying that out. So in our utilities, which looks like it's trending even higher than 50%, has increased over the past two years, 50% higher than we first originally budgeted for. And the good news is on number 10 is our foundation aid has increased 28%, which will help hopefully offset all of our increases elsewhere. So just a little snippet about our enrollment. You can see it's kind of trending for the past three years. We're trending up at Bed's Day in October. It's trending up. And we've seen that each day we get an enrollment number and we're watching the numbers drastically to see where we're going to be. And we also have a demographer doing a report for us based on new homes coming in and the new population. And hopefully we'll have that pretty soon for a presentation in the spring. So to get, dig down into the budget, I kind of laid it out a little differently this year, similar to the last meeting. But, you know, the exciting thing is that you just saw a whole presentation on instruction, right? So this is the instructional program. This is the thing that has a lot of moving parts in it. And when I say moving parts, you know, just give you a little, I didn't put it on the slides, but this year we served 1.7, last year, '21, '22, we served 1.7 meals in the district. We support over 63 athletic teams. We support the strings, the chorus, band, orchestra, steel drums, mariachi bands, and all those extracurricular activities that go on inside and all these engagements. The other thing that's interesting piece of information with transportation, I talked to Dan Higby today, the buses that we contract with travel 2.5 million miles a year. So think about that, that's a lot of miles. And they go from New York City to Duchess, to Ulster County, all these different counties, Rockland, Westchester. They also employ 187 employees, right? So we never really think of them as employed by the district, but they are contracted by us and they're all mostly community members that work for Mid-City. So if we dive in a little bit, you'll see some increases and some dips and dives. And a lot of it is we reallocated and actually corrected where budgeting, people may have been budgeted in the wrong code. You'll see special education went up. We actually budgeted more of our psychologists in there so we can code them for Medicaid billing. And we actually get reimbursed for that. And we also have the TAs that we actually created 20 full-time TA positions last year. And that's why that is increased there. And then you saw tonight, you abolished 40 part-time positions. That's why we abolished the 40 part-time because we had created 20 full-time. And that seems to be a way for us to start trending, more full-time employment for folks. The regular school, that's really like teachers, math, science, social studies, phys ed, things like that. So that's up about 5%. And I showed in the graph before, you know, we're looking at 5% with increases. Special education, I just talked a little bit. You'll see that increase quite a bit. But a lot of it is you'll see in other schools that's kind of, the budget has gone down. So it really equals out in the end. Our occupational education, which is CTEC, that's up a little bit because we're sending more students and the cost of sending them there has increased. Our special schools, this winter school and summer school, right now, this is, this is kind of highlighted here, but hopefully we're going to be able to put that into our grants, our American Rescue Plan. And that's why I highlighted that in gray a little differently. Our instructional media, that's our computer programming. That actually decreased a little bit. And again, I moved, we were moving some people into different categories because that's actually, they moved departments. And so we're actually categorizing them in the right place. And actually, I'm sorry, instructional media, that's the library services. I'm sorry. Instructional media is the library services. We've had people who have retired, who have left the district. So that's why we're seeing a little bit of a decrease in the salary because when we bring people in, they'll be at a lower salary. Our computer assisted instruction, that's increased a little bit. We are looking to keep enhancing the program, needing some more computers and things of that nature. So we're seeing that there. Our attendance and registration, again, we moved somebody out of another area and put them in here. That's why that's increased. Our guidance services, we've actually added more guidance counselors, support staff last year. Health services, that has increased. And that's mostly contractual, psychological services. And the reason why this has dropped so much is, and that's why the special education line went up so much, we took them out of that service because these are non-IEP psychologists. The other ones are all IEP-based psychologists. And we get Medicaid aid on them. That's why we moved them back into their proper category. Social work services, that decreased. And again, we moved a lot of those back up into special education. And people personnel, that just increased a little bit as well. Co-curricular activities, these are all the after-school programs and clubs. That's just increased the minimal just based on contractual. Interscholastic athletics, that has increased just a little bit just to cover our costs for athletics. And people transportation, usually their contract is by the CPI. So it's a little bit over 4% this year. So that's what we're budgeting for. And then we'll actually land at probably a little bit higher rate based on when we get the final numbers. Our tuition and our transfer to food services, that remains the same. And our transfer to special aid, that remains the same. So the transfer to food services, if you remember, probably 10, 12 years ago, we committed to having Borsad coal cuts. So that's why we committed that $39,400 to there. When that's all totaled up, we're just shy of $140 million on the instructional component. And that's an increase of a little bit over 8%. Again, these are just the proposed numbers. And again, this number is without benefits. So once we get to the final in April, you'll see it with benefits added in, primarily because we're still getting rates from our dental, vision and medical plans. So we hope to get that number down a little bit on the 8%. So with our community engagement, up next is March 8th, a virtual event. It'll be budget review and community question and answers. And our next presentation will be capital and benefits on March 9th. So we have a little bit of a break and then we'll be back with capital and benefits. And then we'll have a revenue discussion. And then on April 20th, the board will adopt the budget. And then on Tuesday, May 16th, we'll have a budget vote. Okay, any questions?
Board members, any questions, starting with Mr. Mitch Miller? Mitch Williams?
Mitch Miller.
It's the hour. I'm really messing up tonight. Okay, Mr. Cruzenza, Mr. Perino.
I have some questions, but I'll take it up to Mitch. Some of us have been here, Mr. Cruzenza or myself, we've been here since 8:30. I suppose I'll say my question at 8:30 AM.
Nicole, and please have all your questions together, please.
Why wouldn't I?
Please, just no back and forth, okay?
I don't think that you have the right to silence my questions.
I'm not asking you to silence your questions, my dear, okay? Just give us your questions, please.
Before I've even spoken. Okay, so, Mr. Tuttle, I just have one question for you. So this should be easy. But I may have other questions based on your answer just to make sure that we get here.
Make sure I get it right then.
All right. So the computer assisted instruction. I want to start out with a comment about the special education. I appreciate you breaking that down into detail for us. Thank you for that. And with regard to the computer assisted instruction, could you break that down? Because your answers and in your commentary on that were not as specific as I'd like to know.
Okay, so what we're proposing for the computer each year, and I did it in the administrative one, we have some money allocated for new Chromebooks in there. And then we're also going to have some allocated in the instructional part for Chromebooks. And most of it is through Bosie's. So when we buy them, we get actually 76% of the funding back. So, and it's kind of a revenue source for us. So that's why we try to do that, to make sure our revenue. And when Jeff Smith was here, he was complimenting us on how we generate revenue from our expenditures, right? So that's one of the things we're doing there. We're also looking at replacing Sharpboards in all the classrooms, the touchscreens, because they've kind of exceeded their lives and we cannot buy that brand anymore.
And Mike wasn't on. How old are those Sharpboards?
We started in 2013, something like that.
So about a decade old.
Yeah, in Presidential Park. So it's going fast. And then there's just contractual salaries and stuff in there as well.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
I just wanted to emphasize something when we're talking about occupational education and other Bosie Services. Those are always state, we get our money back, but we don't get it back for the 23, 24 school year. We wouldn't see that revenue. And that has to be up there about, at one time it was 50%. Is it more than that now?
It's a little bit more than that, up around 70%. Yeah, 70, 76% depending on our RWA. Yeah, so.
So really, if you used and just rounded it off, if you look at, and I'm rounding it off, $6 million, all right, it's costing the district basically about $18,000.
Yeah. So basically, the Bosie sets the rates for us and then.
Your RWA, I remember going, yep.
And then our enrollment keeps increasing with CTEC, which is great, right? We're sending more students there. And hopefully over the next three or four years, when they get their facilities with more capacity, more students will go and take opportunities down there. So it is a great program and we do get aid back on it as well.
Yeah.
And we, go ahead.
Can I just commend you guys for the fact that you do not typically restrict the amount of students that you allow to go to career and tech at Bosie's? Because a lot of districts do do that. It becomes a budget number for them instead of a student-centered result. So you should be commended as a board and as a school district for allowing as many students who want to try to get career development to do that.
Again, just to reiterate, a lot of these numbers will be fine tuned once we get closer to the final revenue stream and our programming. So these are really where we're, usually we come in a little bit, we come in pretty close to what we proposed here in the draft, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Gomez, did you have a question?
No, thank you for a wonderful.
Thank you for an excellent presentation.
Tried to.
Okay.
That was a lot.
We know that was a lot, thank you.
I know I'm going to have comments on my next comment, but just a friendly reminder, the district has a cell phone policy. And I feel that as a board of education, we should lead by example. Thank you. I'm moving on to Board of Education Committee reports. There was a question with regard to the approval and waiving of the first and second reading. Crystal? Are we waiving everything under that?
Yes.
So it's going to be removed from the agenda?
We're waiving the reading of all of the policies you're voting on.
All right, and Vince is prompting me here.
Okay.
So it's B where we're going to have problems. So we're just going to now approve the waving, the waving, the waving of the first and second reading of the policy. So I need a motion for that. Moved by Mr. Cruzenza, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion on that?
Just that I think this is an awful lot of policy. I don't agree that we should not read it. I think our public has a right to know. And if we did a little bit at a time, it wouldn't take up so much time. This is tremendous, a huge amount of information. So I'm going to vote no on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
So now on the policy committee, the approval of policies recommended. We are pulling one policy or we're pulling them?
Sorry, your motion is to approve the policies recommended by the Erie One audit as presented.
But I thought that Ms. Houston had requested that a policy be removed.
34.
20 be removed for further discussion.
3420.
No, you had it right.
Okay.
So we are going to approve the policies except for 3420. I just want to, I want to get my handle on.
No, but why are we removing that policy?
We're just tabling it.
Removing it from the vote, I'm sorry. The hour's getting, you know. So we're going to approve all of the policies from the Erie One audit except 3420. Which is being tabled. Don't I need a motion to table it?
She'll move.
We already made the motion at the beginning and changed the agenda.
I'm going to hide my head. All right, so I need the motion. Who's making the motion? Made by Vince, seconded by Mr. Gomez. Any discussion?
Yes, I will be voting no on the following itemized policies. 1240, 1640, 3310, I'll give these to you. 5230, 5672, 5670 and 6160. That's, I don't know if you want me to list what they are or not for time's sake.
Maybe you want to, I wouldn't mind hearing what they are.
Okay.
If I'm on the policy committee, but at the end of one or two meetings, I think I was out sick, I missed, I just want to make sure.
So 1240, I do have to pull up the agenda on that one, is resignation and dismissal. 1640 is absentee ballots. 3310 is public access to records. 5230 is acceptance of gifts, grants and bequests to the district. 5672, information security breaches and notification. 5670 is records management. And 6160 is professional growth and staff development.
You said one of our resignations and removals, was that, did I hear that?
That is one of the policies I'm voting no on, yes.
Which one? If I may ask, I just want to ask, what does that policy refer to? I don't remember off the top of my head. I'm familiar, I remember all the other ones discussing them in the policy committee, but that one.
Well, I could pull it up, but I think that the computer is set for public. 1240, if you can, I don't know how to get this out of the public mode, but I would read that one. Oh, good.
Oh, you got it up?
All they did there, Ms. Houston, is change the subject. It says, the original said resignations and dismissals. So it was, they eliminated.
Your microphone, Vince, I'm sorry.
They eliminated the word dismissal and put for vacancies. So the content of the policy has not been changed, just the title.
Right, so, well, when I read through the policies, I find things that I don't approve of personally. And as a duly elected member with one vote, I realize that it's probably going to pass anyway. But I feel that I did my homework, I read them carefully and I found some objections in there that I would have liked to have seen written differently. And I understand that some of the changes were just to comply with the new laws in New York State. So I took that into consideration. I know we kept the vaccination policy itself off because we know the state is about to, you and I were in that meeting together, is about to probably go ahead with some things, but we wanted to wait on that. But for me, like the discrimination policy, the vaccination and medical status is very important to me. With regard to these other policies, I could go and itemize, but we'd be here all night long. And I know you're already tired, as President Tobiasen has already reminded, to keep this short with the budget questions I had. So it's up to you, I can go...
Thank you for clarifying that, as well as to Mr. Cruzenza for clarifying that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or any other discussion? So I need now a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of, do you want me to relist them?
I think, do you have them all?
Okay. You're welcome.
Any negative votes?
To those particular ones, but I voted yes on the other ones.
The other ones, thank you. So the motion passes. One, two, three, four, five, six, six, one.
I don't know if that's accurate, because Ms. Houston did vote for the policy, just wanted to change it to it, you know? So she had a yes vote, so you can't count it as a no.
But it's not unanimous for all.
That's a good question.
It's only one nay on the policy she identified voting against.
Right, instead of, yeah.
Hundred percent majority on all the other ones.
Yeah. So I shouldn't do the counting as I did?
Yeah.
I was wrong. All right, we're going to move on. Does any other Board of Ed Committee reports? I know the Audit Committee's next meeting is March 13th at 5:30.
We're going to have our next Fair Funding Committee meeting, and a wonderful clerk could noted and notify all our members. March 7th, Tuesday, 4:15, that'll give time for parents, our members to pick up kids, drop them off from school, and for our teachers who are members to also be there. So it's 4:15 at the Board Office, March 7th. We are looking at a resolution to, with respect to reimbursements and funding concerning some of our special education services.
Anyone else have a report?
We had a Safety, Safety, Security, and Health Committee meeting, it was on the 14th.
Could you put your microphone on, sir?
I think it's on, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Safety, Security, and Health Committee meeting on the 14th. Mr. Zapka conducted the meeting. It was a virtual meeting with all buildings participating. And the, I'll just summarize this very quickly. There are going to be more weekly and monthly inspections of the buildings. And here's what they're going to be looking for. Furniture not, not ordered or not installed by the district, and that's because of fire codes. There should be no appliance hookups in the district, in the rooms, such as coffee pots and whatever. The contact paper on cabinets should not be there and should be removed. The power strips are to be regulated, and there's to be no posters or banners or tapestries on the windows. In addition, concerning artworks, only 50% on the walls and 20% in the hallways. So, and very important, IDs must be visible at all times. All members of the staff should be wearing IDs. So that's what Mr. Zapka and his staff are going to be looking for. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Before I get in more trouble, does the Board want roundtable this evening or at the late hour? Is that okay with everyone?
Yep, you want to take a vote?
I wanted to say something, but we didn't have community roundtable.
That's what I'm talking about, eliminating it.
I meant to say, community announcements. We didn't have either, so. Is it going?
Yeah, I want to say something as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Houston.
Okay, first of all, to our community who's hung in there and stayed with us this long. There is a basketball program being started at First Congregational Church called Upwards. We have a gym in the church. And if anybody has interest in joining, please reach out to me, and I will put you in touch with our head of the program, Keith Miles. And I'm very excited about this. Secondly, I found this great quote, had to throw it out there because we were talking about data earlier. "Data, data, data, I can't make bricks without clay." So, just a little, little thought there. And finally, I want to congratulate our winter graduates because they really worked, and they accomplished something special. And I just want them all to know, I appreciate you, even though I couldn't be at your ceremony. That's all I have, thank you.
Mitch, Mr. Mitch Williams?
Yes, yes, um, just, listen, these kids are showing up, and these kids are showing out. I am so excited about what's going on with these kids. When I was definitely going to talk about the graduates, that was incredible. It was just with the families, the showing, show of support of the families, and just the work that the kids are doing. Also, let's talk about wrestling. Wrestling doing a great job. Bowling, which is new, great job. Of course, the orchestra, which we saw. Modified cheerleaders, which is new. And it's just like, these kids are just stepping up, this, I mean, they are doing their thing. I apologize for having my cellphone out. It was just, I had went to the Black History Month thing yesterday at the high school, and these kids just stepped up, and they took control of it. And I just wanted to have their names. So it was Shad with his crew, and Tanaya Clark is the president, Gabby Vasquez, vice president, Kiana Aguilar, and Tashana Grant is the secretary, Sean Knight, public affairs. I mean, they had Jeopardy here.
Oh, yes.
And we had Family Feud in there. It was incredible. We was going at it. I mean, my family won, but, you know, we ain't, just saying. But it was difficult, and these kids knew it, they were dressed up. I mean, these kids are just doing such an incredible job all across the district. And I just want to also commend, as far as, of course, the teachers, administrators, and all of the educators, security guards, but also the building grounds. Building grounds, I want to commend them because we have are in the community that are doing programs in the school, and the buildings and grounds are so accommodating to the people that's in the community, as well as the school principals. Their attitudes have just been excellent, which has created this whole thing where it's just been great. And it's just been a great relationship. So I just have to commend that, and I'm just excited about that. Last but definitely not least, OX Basketball Team is the best. And this is, once again, this is all part of Middletown. Midi pride is at an all-time high right now. We have two players, Keon Gill, Jared Smalls, came straight from Middletown, they play on that team. They are 20, I think 26-0. We have ranked number 10th in the nation. So, fourth in the nation, excuse me. And all of us are all at the games, we're all supporting, we're all at the basketball games. And if you're not coming, hey, I encourage you, come on out. Put your blue shirt on, come out. Great things, these kids, listen, we are winning, okay? And that's what, that's what's going on. So thank you for that time. And the Diversity Committee, March 6th.
Okay.
At Moda Suite.
I left of my... I want to commend a member of our community who came out tonight and spoke from his heart, Andrew Moore. Andrew made some good points, and I, I think that our school district really, really missed the ball on this. I, I'm not sure who's in charge of the Steering Committee for MBK, but Mr. Moore knows the person who started the MBK program. He's shaken hands with President Obama. He's a multimillion-dollar real estate broker, and he also has experience in education. Think of a finer individual, one of our mentors. And I, for the life of me, can't understand why he hasn't been made a mentor this year. Thank you.
Me motivated. Hold on.
Yeah, I'm confused by that statement, because I was here for the mentor program that evening that we had it, and I believe, am I wrong? And not a mentor?
No, we have not assigned mentors as of yet. How we're doing it is different. We have advisors, and we put together a committee, because we're trying to put criterias for mentors as well as presenters.
So no one is a mentor yet?
No.
Thank you, just the clarification.
That's not...
Everyone has received the superintendency value. We, I'll give you a date when I need this back. Please make sure that you don't sign it or anything, that I will put in our superintendent's goals and objectives. I'm going to use it as goals and objectives.
I'm sorry, but before you go, Vince, I also, the Step Team, my apologies. Definitely can't forget about them, they're new as well. They came and they performed. So I've got to acknowledge them, because they did a great job. Thank you to everybody who's in, these kids are doing.
Question for you.
What Mrs. Creeden has taken, and she has showed us how she has supported the different I will get to everyone. Her, and we have to rate it as being highly effective, effective...
President Tobiasen, why don't you want us to sign our name to what we write? Should be... I don't think that's the way the law goes, maybe I'm mistaken, but...
Okay, fine. All right, I was just going to take them and...
I mean, make it a, you know, whatever you want to do, but if I'm going to write something, I'm going to take credit for it.
All right. Yes, Mr. Gomez?
Community announcements, I, I think it's my turn. Okay, we respect the community announcements.
Sorry, I thought everybody was finished.
No, 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 okay, yes, again, I also join in congratulating the Winter Class of 2023. Wonderful students who are out there soaring to the future, and Godspeed to all of them. Also, the 15th, February 15th, this past that was was National Safety Officer Appreciation Day. Salute, and we SROs for their dedication to making and keeping our schools safe. And also, I hope I have it right, I think, I believe it's Skylar or Skylar's House, one of our young ladies, so a couple of years back was in a horrific fire, no, car accident, and lost her stepmom in, in the Bronx. The community has come together and building a house that will help her thrive in the future. She's one of our grad, one of our students, and we wish her all the best, and we're very happy for that. And finally, there is a survey that's been put out concerning Maple Hill Park, the swimming pool at Maple Hill Park, and how Kate Pol Johnson, who represent that ward in the city of Middletown. So we encourage everybody in the Middletown community to express their thoughts. Do they want to see another pool? Do they want to see a pad with sprinklers? Or how do they want that to serve our families and our children? That's all.
Sorry, I do apologize.
Mr. West, and First of Champions was a tremendous success. Forty-eight students won awards for perseverance, respect, integrity, and dignity, and engagement, which spells very well-received. The mid-year graduation again was an event. Everybody's so excited, you could pick out one, a student here gets really excited, it was just amazing. The pancake breakfast over at, that was real, we, a number of us were there, that was really good. I always eat too much, it was great. And today was an event here, the Community Connectors, they came in and they blew their socks off, so to speak. The students were just incredible. It was almost like for us, and they were just, everyone was just so highly impressed with what goes on in this district. And, you know, they were talking about the credits on, available. We already have 40 credits, you know, 35 credits. Then they had like a roundtable discussion with a number of different students here. And the poise and their presentations, it was just awesome. And we were there for like
as far as the change agents, where we're doing interventions in the community, myself and Fox. And so we had a young lady who was, you know, was in an altercation last year, and she was, ended up being honored at the thing, and her mother just called me and was like, look, she's doing great now for the interventions, and, you know, she's was taping it and sent me the tape. And so that was big, so that's, that's real big ups to Whitaker.
It's an incredibly successful program. Really makes the students need...
Yes, John? Wow.
That's right, congratulations. Mike, you said your mic is not on. No, no, you said your mic ain't on.
For the public...
I'm glad somebody else makes them.
Norville Conwell Town High School is Dr. Ed. I announced that at the good, also Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, March 18th, and I have more about that to say. And finally, I want to compliment Mr. Estrada for being Board of Education. This serves on the Bosse Board and a number of boards, and he's first vice community Lou Pierre.
Our Board election, and I had it, is May 16th is the Board vote. You can pick up if you're interested in running for a Board of Education position. You can pick up thank you for, I was going to say, I thought it was today, the School Resource Officers Recogn... Okay. And I thank my Board Okay. Our next Board of Education meeting then March 9th. Motion to...
So move.